Have a motion?
I do, let me, I have it in one of my tabs. I move that the Alamo County Public School Board go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia under subsection 1. For the discussion consideration, our interviews with prospective candidates for employment, and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body.
Second.
Okay, move by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Lee, that we go into closed session for the reasons listed. Ms. Johnston, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
And Mr. Page?
Yes. Okay, convene in closed session. See you shortly.
See ya.
Good afternoon. It is now 6:31 and I call this July 8th meeting of the Alamo County School Board to order. Ms. Osborne, do you have a motion from our closed session?
Yes, sir.
Hey Graham, I think you have to certify first.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I can do that, Graham.
Okay.
I, I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting where heard discussed are considered in the closed meeting.
Second. Alright, so move by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Alcarro, that we meant, that we approved that nothing was discussed in the closed meeting, except for what the original motion had stated. Ms. Johnston, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries, and thanks, Mr. Oberg, for calling that to my attention. Now, Ms. Osborne.
Yes, sir, I move that we appoint the individuals selected by the staff to their respective administrative positions.
Second.
Second.
Move by Ms. Osborne, second by Ms. Lee, that we accept all of the staff that have been appointed to administrative positions. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. We will now have a moment of silence. This statement has to be read into our minutes for each of our meetings that we are being, that's being held electronically. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State Law and Alamo County ordinance, because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. Meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County Public Schools website, and public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. It is now my pleasure to introduce our board members. Dr. Acuff is absent from today's meeting. Mr. Jono Alcarro.
Jono Alcarro at large.
Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Rayvanna District.
Dave Oberg.
Dave Oberg, Whitehall Magisterial District.
Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District, and tonight we are very pleased to have a new student rep, A.J. Johnson. A.J., could you give us a few introductory statements, please?
Um, like a hello?
Maybe tell us what school you attend? Like us to know.
Uh, Community Lab School.
Okay. Alright, A.J., and make sure that if you have, that you feel, that if you have anything that could contribute to our discussions during any part of the meeting, that you make sure that you offer that information to us. Feel free to jump in at any time. We will welcome you to our meeting as our student rep.
Thank you.
Could I now have a motion to approve our agenda for tonight's meeting?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Move by Mr. Alcarro, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve the agenda for the July 8th meeting. Ms. Johnston?
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We need a motion to approve our consent agenda for tonight.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Ms. Alcarro, second by Ms. Osborne, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion?
I had a question to ask about the mask policy revision.
Okay.
Uh.
The same issue.
Uh, I, I've gotten a couple of questions about just the mitigation strategies referred to in the outdoor mask removal part of it. What does that look like right now, for instance?
Dr. Haas or Ms. Schmidt, who is going to jump on that question?
I think we've got Ms. Schmidt and also Mr. Holden that could help you with that, so I'm gonna, let's go to Rosalyn first for the current state, and then Ross could address any questions about the policy.
Can I make a point of order, Mr. Chair? I think there's a motion before, before the board. Typically, what we do is pull the, the concerned issue and then act upon the rest of the consent agenda and then come back to the thing that's been pulled.
Okay, we could do that. I was thinking that there was a question on the motion, but we could hold then on the motion and then come back to this, to this item. Ms. Johnston, could you call the roll, please, on the motion?
Um, Ms. Lee? Uh, so, I'm sorry, Dave, do we need a separate, a different motion then?
We just pulled that portion of the, of the, where you're asking to approve the consent agenda with that item removed to be?
Okay.
What she said was that she had a question on that motion. She didn't ask to have, remove it. She just had a question, which could be the same, but anyway.
So if you want to discuss, you just need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus that policy, and then after you approve the consent agenda, you can come back and talk about that policy.
I move that we approve the consent agenda less section 3.4.
Second.
Okay, there's been moved that we approve the consent agenda minus section 3.4. Ms. Johnston, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Alright, Ms. Lee, so you had a question on item 3.4, right?
Yeah, it's just what the other mitigation strategies are for the unmasked students outside in this policy.
Um, so when we refer to mitigation strategies, we know that redundancy and layers are key, right? So currently, we focus on hand hygiene, exclusion of symptomatic students, uh, and, and things along those orders. So we felt like it was important to at least make acknowledgement of that, and that, that policy, because just because we're outdoors doesn't mean other mitigation strategies go away.
I think the one specifically is distance. Is there a distance strategy? Like, let's say we pass this tonight, tomorrow?
Yeah, so the approach we're going to take to social distancing outside is we're going to instruct students and staff to distance where practical. And so I'll take an example, we take a class out to eat lunch, for instance, and they're out there for a while, and they're in their static. We would encourage and require distancing. If kids are running around on a playground, we don't want to isolate and, and, and police that, so they will likely not be, when kids are active and moving around, be truly socially distanced.
Mr. Holden, do you have additional information on Ms. Lee's question?
No, I think Ms. Schmidt responded to it. It was a general acknowledgement that there are mitigation strategies that we are using to, you know, maintain the health of the school community as best as possible, and we just wanted to make sure that, that was acknowledged and remains part of our mission.
Um, Ms. Schmidt, is there, uh, I, I know that we are enjoying really high vaccination rates in Alamo County, and we have very low transmission rates currently. Is there a situation in which there would be distancing on the playground, say, or just in those situations?
That's awesome. In the language, we made sure that we were, went in line with, I can't, I don't have exactly in front of me what the exact language we used, but we want to make sure we're aligned with the, is the most recent guidance, right? And so we made this decision in alignment with our local health department and local public health officials, and so we will remain in contact with them, and if they advise that, for, for instance, community rates are getting high enough that we should be more concerned around outdoor transmission, we would employ more social distancing. But from a mask policy, based on current community levels, we feel like this is an appropriate exemption to grant.
Okay, thank you.
If I might, I, I would just like to say that I, I understand we were changing some of the mitigation policies as regarding temperatures and things like that, and I know that there have been some learned people who have communicated with us about changing the mask policy. I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote for it this evening, but I would like to have this brought up again. I mean, this is a fluid situation, and I think we all are, are very well aware of that and, and, and agree with it. And so I don't want this to just go into, to be approved and then not revisited again. And I would like to, to make sure that we're revisiting it right around the time, if not before. You know, maybe in our August, first August meeting or our second August meeting, and then on a, on a fairly regular basis, just to see where we are on this issue and the other mitigation issue.
I agree with you, Jono, and I think it's going to be an issue. I mean, I, I hope that by the time you and I go off the board, it will be in a situation where they're like, what are you talking about? But I suspect for, for a period of time, we're going to have to just be on this all the time.
We, and, and one of the, one thing along those lines is, you know, I've been talking with several people who have said, you know, that, that COVID's over. And, and I bring up the wisdom of Yogi Berra, which is, you know, it ain't over till it's over. And if, if we, you're really.
It's not over till I sing, Jono.
Oh, boy, well, yeah, hold off on that then. But, um, 182 people died, you know, yesterday, and I, and I would submit that their families don't think it's over. This is across the country, and I know, as Judy said, we're, we're very lucky where we are right now, but with the variants coming through, the others were 15,000 people who, who got new cases, and I, I totally acknowledge the fact that they were not, most of them were not vaccinated. But I just think this is something that we have to stay on top of and, and, and understand it's a fluid situation.
I agree with, with Ms. Alcarro, and Ms. Schmidt, whenever the state issues new guidelines, you would be making us aware of and sort of revising our policy in guidance with those new state guidelines too, right?
Absolutely. So the current public health order is meant to be temporary in nature. It was effective July 1st, and it is set to expire July 25th, and we are being advised that additional guidance will be issued. So we will absolutely bring back any necessary changes as new guidance is released.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other discussion? So we do need a motion then to approve agenda item 3.4.
I move that we approve a gen, uh, consent agenda item 3 dot 4.
Second.
Move by Mr. Alcarro, second by Mr. Oberg, that we approve agenda item 3 dash, 3 dash 4 on our mask policy. Uh, Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. It's my privilege or, well, honor to introduce our spotlight on education tonight, and we have three people that we are presenting as our special guest tonight. I'd like to begin by reading a letter to Mr. Nathan Carter. Dear Nathan, among the values to which our school division will be committed over the next five years, two that are middle, immediately come to mind when thinking about your recent, recent service to our school division, equity and family and community. These are timeless values and necessary ones if a school division is to be an exceptional performer for students, employees, and in the broader community. The best decisions are those that welcome and call upon the wisdom, judgment, and participation of as many voices as possible. The pandemic that brought a temporary halt to in-person meetings of our school board more than a year ago introduced high barriers to collaboration. It complicated face-to-face communications, and it increased the urgency for us to update information. That's when we all came to appreciate the behind-the-scenes, quiet and troubling, troubleshooting competences, competence that you brought to our meetings. As the professional, who, professional who opened increased online access to our constituents, we saw attendance at our meetings go from a few dozen to several hundred, and on one occasion, more than 1,000. As we moved through important decisions on health and safety, on policies, on budget issues, on equity, and on our strategic plan, the engagement of our community now transferred to the whole on-world, online world nearly was flawless. On behalf of our school board, and on behalf of all those families, students, and community partners that increased their knowledge and interaction with our school, school division, we are grateful for your work. Thank you for your foundational help in leading the way to more inclusive and meaning, meaningful connections between the decision-makers and those who benefit from the most informative decisions. We look forward to continuing this important work with you. Thank you very much, Nathan. So let's give Nathan a round of applause here.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Our next two individuals are those in our county who received the McIntyre Prize for this year. It was nearly 100 years ago that one of our state's most successful business and community leaders, Paul G. McIntyre, said that culture and education is a means to improve the quality of life in an increasing technological world, a statement made, by the way, about 70 years before the iPhone was invented. Mr. McIntyre established an award to encourage high school seniors to be leaders in promoting a better quality of life for future generations. The McIntyre Prize has been a part of Alamo County High School graduations since before Franklin D. Roosevelt was President of the United States. This is a pretty impressive figure. Fewer than 200 of the more than 500,000 students who have come through our school doors have received this award. This evening, we have two with us, our award winners for this year. Nehome Medina Roman is an Alamo High School graduate, and Andrew San is a graduate of Weston Alamo High School. I really valued what Nehome said about leadership, that you need to be a good listener, team player, and always be focused on the goal. Her advice for us on the board is to keep supporting students. She tells us that students need someone they can trust, someone who will listen without being judgmental. That's very useful advice for anyone, even those who are not school board members. What's me even more impressive about this young lady is that she came to our county a few years ago with her focus very much on her goal of completing all of her high school education in three years, and that's exactly what happened. Now she's in a pro, program to become a pharmacy technician. She says she learned about the importance of this service from a family member who depends upon life-saving medication. Leadership's come easily to our other special guests. During his career at Weston, Andrew was a class officer and vice president of the Student Executive Council, but probably his most unusual claim to fame occurred not in a classroom, but on the water. Andrew was captain of a school's championship rowing team and a state champion himself. You don't often see someone who is 6'5" in a boat pulling oars, but Andrew insisted he, that was his secret weapon. Asked about how one wins the McIntyre Prize, he says engagement is important as his dedication to problem, problem-solving, being a positive influence on others, and always welcoming newcomers. He will be taking these exceptional qualities across the country later this summer when he begins his college studies at Cal Poly. Please welcome our two student leaders, beginning with Nehome. I'd like to ask both to share some thoughts with us on leadership and goals, and perhaps offer us, offer us a little advice. So first, Nehome. We're pleased to have you with us. Ms. Johnston, is Nehome with us?
Um, was, I don't see. Let's see. Um, it looks like they're gone out of the meeting.
Okay, both of them?
Um.
Andrew?
Andrew, see Andrew.
Okay, oh, yeah, Nehome is back. Okay. Okay, Nehome?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so, um, please give us some remarks.
Um, wait, I, I'm lost. My computer just took me out of the meeting, so I don't know what we are talking about right now.
Okay, we are talking about you receiving the McIntyre Award.
Okay.
And, um, any advice or any type of remarks or anything related to that, that you would like to bring to the board?
Well, I will say, um, that the teachers support me too much. Um, I'm very thankful to them. And I will say to, um, that as a student, I think we need to match the teacher support, so I will advise that the teachers keep supporting the students and talking to them and try to get closer to their students.
Okay, thank you so much, Nehome.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from our board members for Nehome?
Hmm.
No, great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, we really congratulate you on receiving the award.
Congratulations, Nehome, Nehome. Sorry, I apologize for, for saying that poorly. I was there when you received it, uh, at graduation, and you just looked so proud, so happy, and I know your family is so proud for you and happy for you.
Thank you.
Alright, Andrew?
Hi, thank you all for having us tonight. I am very honored to receive the award and honored to be here. Over my four years, I found myself in definitely some odd leadership roles that I didn't see coming in a lot of ways, both formal and informal, and I'm really honored to have those and to be able to have the opportunity to speak with, with you all tonight. My leadership philosophy on my own is simple, to lead with respect and transparency. Obviously, I think that respect for each other and just in general is of the utmost importance, and sometimes we kind of skim past it. And when things get heated, we can lose it, and I just, that's something that like I feel like on my own when I'm reflecting upon my experiences in leadership is something that I want to continue going forward. And transparency is kind of, I mean, I'm sure you've like heard respect before, but transparency, I've found to be really important when I'm like, when I'm working with the team and is kind of my, I don't know, that's my advice or recommendation, and, but that's what I've found is really important in my own leadership roles. I just, I think it's essential to a strong team and so that members can have a full, clear picture of the situation and goals they're working towards. I'm sure that you've probably found, found similar, similar success and similar importance to these two things. But over my four years, I've learned that no matter how hostile a situation may be, or quickly tensions rise, to remember simply in your decisions and actions to put empathy first. I'd like to believe that we all mean well at heart, and that human nature is to care for one another and watch out for each other. So, don't let, I tell myself not to forget that, and I guess that's my, my recommendation is to keep that at heart and keep that in the forefront of all of our decisions when we make those. Listen to each other when we share experiences, remember to watch out for each other in our interactions and in decisions. I've found that the students that I've been around and that our students in general are brave and resilient, especially in this, in this past year. And I think just, that's my recommendation, what I've found to be successful, and to just keep, keep in mind how important it is to keep our spaces in which we learn, spaces that are safe and inclusive, where students are able to be treated equally and with compassion.
Thank you so much for those very profound remarks, Andrew. Thank you very much. Uh, any questions or comments for Andrew?
I, I, I would like to share that I've known Mr. Siamese since Ms. Pam's music, uh, 13 years ago. And they say that a tree can be judged by the quality of its fruit, and Andrew, our tree has done something right, because you, you're a great guy, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
Endeavors. I think you're going to be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oberg. I think you really speak well or speak the sentiments of the entire board, really, even though we don't know Andrew as well as you do. But thank you, and thank you both, Andrew and Nehome, for being here with us tonight. And again, we congratulate you on receiving the McIntyre Leadership Awards. Thank you both.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now have announcements, and I know that Mrs. Collins has one announcement from the cabinet.
I do. Chair Page, thank you so much. Good evening. I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. I'm pleased to share with you some information about our summer learning. For this week, the start of our pre-K through 8 programming, our morning sessions have approximately 1,640 students attending. Our afternoon sessions, which are being run by our community partners, has about 1,240 students enrolled. Our high school summer youth course programming, our traditional high school summer school, has approximately 1,065 students enrolled. In addition, for grades 9 through 12, we have 200 students coming to complete courses from the previous spring. All of these numbers are higher than previous summer programming numbers. We will bring to you a full report in the fall with more detailed informations, but I wanted to give you the, these numbers. They're strong numbers, and we're pleased with the number of students that are engaging in summer learning. Finally, I'd like to invite you to stop by our elementary, middle, or high schools to see its students and teachers in action. Summer learning continues through the month of July. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Collins. Any questions on any of the information presented to us by Ms. Collins? Okay, then thank you very much for that update on our summer school program. I don't think there is any other announcements right from the school board superintendent. All right, so we're now down to public comment. Vice Chair Carlson, public comment.
Sorry, I'll go ahead and begin by reading the public comment guidelines. The school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Alamo County residents and community members. As authorized by ordinance of the county of Alamo, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during the COVID-19 pandemic. The school board is committed to encouraging public comment despite its need to meet on a virtual basis. And for this reason, there will be two ways for the public to provide comment. First, as always, written comments can be submitted to the school board clerk or sent to the school board directly prior to the start of the meeting, or really anytime that works for you, and will be given to all of the school board members for review. Second, as long as the school board holds its meetings electronically, members of the public wishing to provide public comment during the meeting may sign up online by 1:00 PM the day of the meeting. Um, so instructions have been provided for our speakers today, but for the courtesy of our observers, we do have a new process. Not everyone is in our meeting right now. There'll be three speakers at a time, three in the waiting room, and we will rotate through as we get through all 40 speakers. I will add that for our speakers, please be paying attention to the Zoom meeting, not just the live stream, because there's often a delay that can cause some confusion, so. Before, let's see, um, so speakers during the meeting, are those submitting written comments should state their name and address or their magiserial district. Speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or the operations of the school division. As a reminder, the clerk has the ability to disconnect the speaker who is disruptive, profane, or fails to abide by these guidelines for orderly and productive discourse. Speakers have two minutes to speak. I will try to notify you when you have one minute left. Please be paying attention to the time. And lastly, although the school board will not respond to comments made during the public comment period, school board members may address comments and often do at the end of the meeting agenda under other business. So with that, and I would add for those online, that please be gracious with us because this is the first time we're doing it this way. So the first three speakers, which I'm assuming are already in our meeting, are going to be Matthew Merzajewski, Sandra Holbrook, and Matthew Holbrook. So. Mister, oh, yeah. Matthew Merzajewski, you're up if you're if you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Matt Merzajewski from the Whitehall District with Henley Student. I've spoken on recent school board meetings regarding Courageous Conversations pilot program and lack of transparency. After the June 10th meeting, many school board members noted that they were not familiar with the content and curriculum presented in the pilot program. So I asked the members of the school board, have you had a chance to review the PowerPoints and speak to Dr. Costa regarding the program? Have you reviewed quantitative data for the program? Was it a success? Love to hear. Soon a vote will take place behind the closed doors to decide if this pilot program should roll out more broadly to the county. Dr. Haas and members of the board, a petition with over 420 adult signatures from Alamo County residents was sent requesting two simple steps. One, a balanced review of program content. Two, open public surveys and forms to discuss the materials and findings. These requests, in my personal opinion, are a simple measure to engage parents and community members in a review of the subject matter. Dr. Oz, I also inquired about a response to the petition recently and was originally assured that, quote, "The Henley Advisory is a pilot, subjective in-depth evaluation and assessment will continue in the summer." There'll be opportunities for parents to review any proposals that come out of the review and offer feedback before any decisions are made about the future structure of our anti-racist advisory lesson plan. And since the petition request for public review has been ignored or denied, I'm not sure. I'm personally requesting clarity on these two promises, and please comment at the end of the session if you could, so that all 420-plus signatories of the petition can hear it directly. Number one, please share the details of your in-depth evaluation and assessment with the community and parents of the pilot program. And number two, clearly outline how parents in the community can get involved. What are the opportunities for proposal of feedback before decisions are made about the anti-racism advisory lessons? The fact that we've exceeded our limit for public comment on this meeting means we need more transparency and dialogue on this topic, and I ask and request for those opportunities to be clearly stated and made by the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, sir. The next speaker will be Sandra Holbrook.
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi. I just want to say the next speaker, my husband, he's not able to make it, but he notified the board as soon as he received it that he was caught up at work and couldn't make it and asked that it be given to someone else.
Thank you for letting us know. You can go ahead with your comments now.
Okay, my name is Sandra Holbrook. I'm in the Ravanna District. I'm a parent of three children in Alamo County. In light of emerging research, I'm extremely concerned about the prolonged use of masks in children. Since March 2020, we know more about COVID. It has been established that the virus itself does not have the same impact on children as it does adults, and children are not the drivers of the disease. Data from the Blue Ridge Health District supports this. There have been a total of nine children under the age of 10 hospitalized during the last 16 months and zero deaths under the age of 40 from COVID in the Blue Ridge Health District. Although children are the least likely to get seriously ill from COVID, they are the ones that have suffered the most by the restrictions we placed on them. Emerging research shows the benefits of masks, especially in children, may not necessarily outweigh the risks. A 42-page study that I sent to each one of you from the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health highlights the effects of prolonged mask use, such as increase in heart rate, skin temperature, and dermatological conditions, decrease in oxygen saturation rates, dizziness, impaired thinking and concentration, and increase in fatigue levels. The study reports after only two hours of wearing the mask, the pathogen density increases tenfold in experimental observational studies. Our kids are not wearing these masks in a sterile surgical setting. As a result, they are literally walking around with a Petri dish on their face. These are only the physiological consequences. The psychological consequences may even be of greater harm and are yet to be fully determined, especially since our local mental health services are overwhelmed with ACPS students. Initially, children were made to wear masks to protect staff members. We are past that phase as every single adult has free access to the vaccine. We can unmask our children and still keep our kids safe by continuing with some common sense mitigation strategies such as air purification, increased time outdoors, limiting shared materials, and not allowing children with symptoms to come to school. Those that wish to continue to wear a mask should be free to do so. The mask requirements for our children need to be lifted before more harm is done, both physiologically and psychologically.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Holbrook.
And I really do hope that-
Your husband is not here. We will move to the next. Yep, we'll move to the next three speakers, which will be Tony Bruno, Daniel Mays, and Sharon Flynn.
Tony Bruno has not joined the meeting.
Okay, so I'll put a note and come back to him at the end if he, if he pops up in the waiting room. Daniel Mays, I think I saw him earlier.
Correct.
My name is Daniel Mays. I'm the father of two children, a resident of the Whitehall District. And as many parents do, I want our children to learn and grow in a safe, welcoming environment, which is free of any kind of discrimination. Like most people, I want to see the eradication of racism and prejudice of any kind. Despite ACPS's good intentions with the implementation of its anti-racist policy, courageous conversations, and culturally responsible teaching, I strongly disagree with its methods of fighting discrimination with more discrimination. Children should be taught personal responsibility and that hard work and effort is the key to a good life, and that race is not a factor. There are far too many successful Americans of all races and creeds, which disproves the idea that the color of one's skin is a detriment to one's success. Teaching anti-racism, white privilege, and the other ideas of critical race theory has no place in K-12 education. It just creates resentment and division and serves no good purpose. I urge the school board to take into consideration the objections to the anti-racist policy, courageous conversations, and CRT. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. The next speaker is going to be Ms. Sharon Flynn. I did see her on. Ms. Flynn, if you can hear us, your turn is now. Okay, I will go ahead and put a note to come back. She is in the meeting, though, and she is not muted, so. Jennifer, I don't know if you can mute her and send her a message to let her know that it's her turn.
It looks like she was just connecting to her audio.
Ms. Flynn, can you hear us? Okay, in the interest of time, I will note, and Ms. Flynn, if you can't hear us, I will cycle back. But for now, Mr. John Smith, if you are in here, you are the next speaker.
Has not logged into the meeting.
I need to get a better system than my little color coding because it's getting confusing. Come back, they're not in here. Go back, she is not in yet. Yes, Ms. Flynn, is that you?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. So let's go ahead and do you now. And I'll put a note to come back to Mr. Smith if he shows up in the waiting room.
Okay, thank you.
It's my observation that some children and parents have had negative experiences with courageous conversations, and they're trying to share constructive feedback with the county to make it more inclusive to all. As part of this curriculum, our children are being taught to be activists, told to speak out loud when they disagree. Many kids watched parents speak out at the last meeting, only to be doxxed on social media by a group ironically called Hate Free Schools Coalition of Alamo. Children saw parents listed by name and labeled, quote, "A threat to all children." One woman promoted contact with employers of the parents to rat them out as bigots. This was after these parents asked for a pause in the rollout of this curriculum after sharing real experiences with bullying, confusion, shame, invasion of privacy, and feeling unsafe at Henley. For the sake of our children, I ask this school board and the community to be inclusive and kind to children who are uncomfortable putting labels on themselves and their friends, who are uncomfortable deconstructing their identity, or discussing sexuality with teachers and peers. Consider instances where kids are feeling shamed, like a mixed-race child or white child living at the poverty level. What's the real takeaway for children who are being taught to be activists? That they should only speak up if their opinion matches that of their teachers or else? That's what children, parents, and even many teachers are observing right now. Will you pause, listen, and take feedback? Or is it true that some kids' feelings and vulnerabilities are more important to you than others? If you really listen, I don't think you'll hear opposition to teaching kids about role of racism in US history. You'll hear that kids already do acknowledge and accept peers with differences. Dr. Costa even said herself that when asked about accounts of racism at Henley, the biggest problem was the school is too white. When I asked my own son about his observations at Henley, he said, "Mom, I like everyone if they're nice. I don't care if a boy likes a boy, dresses like a girl, or has different color of skin. We play soccer at recess with anyone who's nice." It reminded me a lot of Dr. Martin Luther King's message about looking at a person's content of character, not their skin color. It appears now that with social justice being paramount to academics, our kids are being taught what to think, not how to think, and anyone with an alternative view will be forsaken. It's not too late to press the pause button, collect input, and work together with parents, students, and teachers to effect a united goal.
Thank you so much for those comments, Ms. Flynn. It's perfect.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Sherdan Jenks, who I believe I saw on, and following that will be Marie Merzajewski and Eric Schmitz. So Sherdan, I see that you're on and you are not muted. You can hear me. It's your turn to speak. I worry that what might be causing this is people are listening to the live stream. And so they don't know when they actually get called to speak. So if you're, you are listening to the live stream, and when you hear this in a few seconds, please pay attention to the Zoom meeting so that you know when your name is called. So Ms. Merzajewski, if you are on, we can go ahead and listen to your public comment now, and I'll come back to Sherdan.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for having me, school board. I wanted to say thank you for listening to all of the concerns. I know it sounds like it was a big deal that you guys have had this many comments. I think I read something like it's been over a decade since you've had to do a lottery. So clearly, there's a lot of concern, and I'm grateful for you guys hearing what we're saying and taking it into consideration. I want to be very clear, I'm never for discrimination of any kind. I have a sibling themselves that would not be considered, they wouldn't fall into the very white cisgender category, okay? I'm not racist, I'm not a bigot, I'm not any of those things. However, I may not ascribe to the same liberal ideology that many of the people that are okay with this liberal agenda are for. We must protect all students, but all means all, right? All. So I have a question that I'd like an answer for, and I want to be clear, this is not a redundant question. I actually want an answer for this. What does ACPS plan to do when teaching courageous conversations, conflicts with the teachers, when it conflicts with the teacher's moral conscience? What happens when a practicing Muslim, Catholic, Anglican, Mormon refuses to present material that includes words such as cisgender, transgender, etc.? All of these religions and many more teach that God created two genders only. How will you deal with such a situation? It would violate basic religious liberty, you guys, if there is not set provisions in place that allow for the many teachers who do not agree with gender fluidity to be forced into conversation such as these. So again, I ask, where is their place for the many teachers who are already concerned that are going to have to teach this next year? Where is the truly safe place for them? Also, how are we going to be handling bathrooms so that all children feel safe? Those that would identify as transgender, but those that would identify as cisgender and are not comfortable sharing a bathroom with somebody of the opposite sex, regardless of how they identify? I think if you guys ascribe to your humanists, can go back to your middle school years, most middle schoolers don't want to share bathrooms with people of the opposite sex, regardless of how they identify.
Ms. Merzajewski.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for providing your comments. The next speaker will be, actually, Sherdan Jenks, if you are on. It'll be easier for me to take you off the list now, but still nothing. Okay, the next speaker will be Eric Schmitz.
It's not in the meeting.
Okay, the following speaker will be John Bryce.
Um, that's my husband, and he actually was not in from the waiting room.
Okay, thank you for letting us know that. We will go ahead and admit him, and you are actually the next speaker, Ms. Bryce? So if you want to provide your comments first.
Can he go, can he be added to the end?
He can come right after you.
He's in the meeting.
Oh, he is? Okay. We're with our baby right now, so he's gonna have to go later.
Ms. Bryce, how about, is he in your house?
He is, yeah.
Audio is not connecting, so how about you give your comments, and then maybe he can hop on your camera and give his comments after that. So I'm gonna go ahead and start your timer now.
Okay, thanks. My name is Meg Bryce, and I have four kids in the Samuel Miller District. I want to speak about the proposed policy on the treatment of transgender and gender expansive students. I too feel that we need a policy that protects all students and that recognizes the dignity of all students. However, there's one aspect of this proposal that I feel sets a precedent that should concern all parents regardless of how you feel about the rest of the proposal. So I want to draw everyone's attention to the section on privacy and confidentiality. This says that the school should ascertain the level of support the student receives at home, and if the student doesn't want the school to contact the parents, then the school should respect that request for privacy. But let us be clear, these are, these are our children, these are minors. If you intentionally keep something from me about my child, I don't think that's in the name of privacy, I think that's secrecy. And I'm sure that there are many people here who would say, well, I trust my teachers and I trust the administrators at our school to handle this. I do too. We have loved our teachers and our administrators, and I feel incredibly lucky. But I don't, I don't know who my kids' teachers and administrators will be forever. I don't know who they'll be in two years and five years and 10 years, and if I'll trust them. So regardless of how you feel about this policy, I ask you to please consider the precedent that would be set here. Are you comfortable with the school being able to keep things from you about your child? Would you still be comfortable if somebody on the opposite side of the political spectrum had the right to keep things from you about your child, if that were the person at the school who are making these calls? Because you may like this policy, but you may not like another policy a few years down the road, and you will have set a dangerous precedent here today. So I'm optimistic that we can come together on this and we can find a compromise. We can write a policy that protects students, but that also respects the rights of parents. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments, Mrs. Bryce. Oh, I do see your husband now. He's muted. I don't know why I spoke louder when I say that, if it makes a difference, but Mr. Bryce, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm good now. You hear me? Sorry about that, I was holding our two-month-old baby, so we can only, we need two of us for that job, so. Okay, I'm John Bryce from Samuel Miller, and I'm here to comment on the A C P S draft policy on the treatment of transgender and gender expansive students. The 35-page draft policy greatly oversteps what is required by Virginia law. This draft policy still needs a lot of work and should be reformed with input from a diverse group of A C P S parents rather than a small group with a political agenda. The idea that A C P S doesn't need to inform parents of a student's desire to transition or of a student's desire to exist as a different gender at school is alarming. Referring parents to child protective services when a student deems their home unsafe isn't unique to the treatment of transgender students. These protections already exist and don't belong in this policy. Specifically calling out those protections in the policy sets the precedent that CPS has the right to oversee the moral and religious views of parents. The idea that same-sex bathrooms and locker rooms can be used by students who identify as that sex regardless of biological gender is a recipe for disaster. The idea that male student athletes, that a male student athlete should compete against female student athletes, just because the male student athlete identifies as female, is both unfair and demeaning to female student athletes. I'm requesting that you form a committee comprised of a diverse group of A C P S parents to guide the rework of the draft policy and restrict the policy's reach to only what is required by state law. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Bryce. The next three speakers, just so people are ready, are going to be Stacy Williams, Ryan Looney, and Chris Humpy Erkel. So Stacy Williams, if you are on. It's your turn to speak.
He was just on.
Okay, I will put a little note, and I will try again.
Just read admitted her.
Okay, let's give her a second. I see her connect. Audio right now. It's John Stan, while we're waiting, Sherdan is still in the meeting right now and unmuted, and I'm not sure what's going on. It might be worth sending him a message or putting him back in the waiting room and then see if we can reintroduce when we, when we call him, like move him to the bottom of the list. As Ms. Williams is still connecting to audio and it's taking a bit, Mr. Looney, Ryan Looney, if you are on, or Ms. Looney, if you are on.
Hi there. Yes, I am Ryan Looney. I'm in the Whitehall Magisterial District. Thanks for hearing my comments tonight. Like some of the previous speakers, I was motivated to speak up by an email from an organization called CARE. I don't know who's behind them. They hide behind anonymous leadership, dog whistles, misinformation, and a call to be nice when speaking. I fully support the short, not 35-page draft of the transgender policy, and I believe it is a moral imperative to protect trans and gender expansive students. As student speaker Andrew Seim said earlier in the meeting, put empathy first. These simple policies provide the support and protection trans kids need. The 2017 School Climate Survey tells us that 83% of trans kids felt unsafe at school every day, and 85% had been harassed or assaulted. The American Academy of Pediatrics states that policies exclusionary to trans kids have detrimental effects on their physical and mental health. Trans kids aren't something theoretical, they are our living, breathing friends and neighbors, and they deserve to be treated with respect and given the promise of a safe inclusive education. Schools with policies similar to the draft that we've been seeing prior to this meeting do not have problems with bathrooms, locker rooms, or athletics. This policy threatens no one and benefits many. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Looney. The next speaker, actually, I will check real quick, is Stacy Williams back in? Is her audio connected? No. So we will move on to Chris Hantia Erkel, who I see. Ms. Erkel, when you're ready. Oh, you're muted.
Hi, sorry about that. I'm Shanty Erkel. I have four children in the public, in the public school district, in the Samuel Miller District. And I want to say that I agree wholeheartedly with Daniel Maze and his objections to the CRT and the courageous conversation for a variety of reasons that two minutes doesn't enable me to address. But, you know, obviously, I am against racism in every, in every form. Equality is, is, is yes, but equity is not what it's talking about. Equity is about a socio-economic ideology, and that's really what this is shrouded in, is a socio-economic ideology. So we say yes to equality, everybody is equal in value, but if CRT is pushing a socio-economic ideology that is very contentious, I disagree with that. I disagree with the public money, the funds, our tax dollars being used to push such an ideology because it is highly contentious. We do not all as parents agree with it. And my, my question is, what happened to the separation of church and state? I believe the CRT being pushed is a violation of the understanding of the separation of church and state, which says, you know, you cannot impose your beliefs on others. These are our children that we're sending to the public school system every day. And I believe that the school system is trying to utilize this platform, this position of power, to push a belief system that people do not believe in, and I do not, I've spoken to many, many parents who do not believe in this. It is highly contentious. It is ideological, and it is not the place for the public school system to push this. The Me Too movement, we don't like it. Why? Because people use their platform and their position of power to push something on those that are weaker. I have evidences of screenshots of BLM flags on the screens of teachers. That's okay for you to push that, but that is a political ideological movement that a lot of people disagree with, but children have been blocked when they have chosen to put conservative paraphernalia on, and that is...
Ms. Erkel, your, Ms. Erkel, your time is up.
So I just wanted to conclude.
Your time is up. Your, your time is up. Their conclusion is over. Ms. Williams, I saw that you were on and that you're... We're moving around, I thought I heard you for a bit, so if you're ready to speak now, we will go ahead and get your comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to LGBTQ and transgender inclusion policy. I think it's imperative that, that this is pushed forward with transgender suicide rates of 50%. It's, it is, it is absolutely imperative that, that they feel that the place that they are in for 40 hours a week is a safe space for them. You know, as, as far as some of the nuances, I mean, if, if they are living in a home that does not support them, if they can have some people that they can discuss it with when they are in school, obviously, those people are not ones who are making medical decisions for them, medical choices, and, and not going to be pushing any sort of agenda forward, but they need to be able, the LGBTQ kids need to be able to feel that they are in a safe space when they are at school.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for those comments. The next speaker will be Mary Nacy, who I see on. And just as a heads up to the ones coming up next will be Laura Breeden and then Jason C. So Ms. Nacy, whenever you're ready.
Okay, excellent, thank you. I'm Mary Nacy. I am the parent of four students in the Whitehall District. I would like to add my voice in support of the policy on the treatment of transgender and gender expansive students, and I'd like to express my gratitude for the work done by the administration and staff to create this policy. People in the LGBTQ community aren't faceless theories. They are people in our community. There are neighbors, our colleagues, our teachers, and the families of our children and of our children's friends, and there are friends as well. They are people we interact with every day, and notable to this form, they are our children. They are the friends of our children. They are the schoolmates of our children and the teammates of our children. They are the children that we've known since elementary school or preschool, or in some cases even from birth. They are children that we have babysat, that we have taken to play groups, and we have read to on rainy afternoons. They are children we have prayed with and laughed with and cried with, and they are children that we have watched grow up. They are children that we would guard with our own lives, at least it seems, until they start to develop their own identities and question where they fit, which is exactly when they need us the most. We need to do better than that. So thank you, school board members, for recognizing that the comfort of some should never come at the cost of the lives of others, especially the lives of our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for those comments, Ms. Nacy. The next speaker will be Laura Breeden.
Hi, thank you. I'm in the Whitehall District. According to the A C P S policy, the role of the school board is to approve the curriculum and learning resources used in the school division and to communicate various constituencies to receive input and gather support for public education. These criteria have not been met regarding the CCAR curriculum. Several school board members stated at last month's meeting, they did not know much about the curriculum. The way this has been handled with seemingly little care for all voices to be heard makes so many of us skeptical and lacking trust. This curriculum will segregate and divide our children and community. It puts race over the value of the individual with a focus on outward identity instead of an individual's characteristics. We teach our children that God cares about our hearts, not the color of our skin. This curriculum will teach children and encourage them to be victims and emotionally fragile, giving them an excuse to look for reasons to be offended instead of assuming the good intentions of others. More importantly, this curriculum is built to come between parent and child, giving school administrators, teachers, and counselors power and control over various sensitive aspects of our children's lives. This is just unethical and wrong. Romans 16:17 says, "I urge you, brothers and sisters, to watch out for those who cause divisions. Keep away from them." I'm asking you to please educate yourselves more broadly on the subjects you are addressing and voting on. Pause the rollout of the curriculum and strategic plan and hold town hall meetings to address the concerns of your constituents. Please do not ignore the concerns of the citizens who elected you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Ms. Breeden. The next speaker is Jason C. I see he's already unmuted. Mr. C., when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jason C., and I have three kids attending schools in the Whitehall District, and I'm speaking tonight in support of the proposed transgender policy. The purpose of Almaral County Schools is to provide education to students that live within the district. There are no exceptions based on race, gender, sexual orientation, or gender expression. The policy on the treatment of transgender students exists to protect these students that are already in our schools and students who have been in our schools for generations. Now finally, a policy has been produced to provide these students with the respect and protection that they deserve. We know that the rate of suicide among transgender youth is really high. More than half have seriously considered it. Adults, especially our educators, who are accepting, make a huge difference. Trans youth with supportive families experience a 52% decrease in suicidal thoughts and a 46% drop in suicide attempts. Transgender students in schools with supportive policies are less likely to miss school due to feeling unsafe, and they are more likely to feel belonging to their schools, communities. Nationwide, only 9% of transgender students say that their communities are accepting. We know that transgender kids who have experienced acceptance in this community that we live in. I like to think that Almaral is capable of being different, of showing students respect, of committing to a safe and nurturing educational environment in which all our kids can learn and succeed. I support this policy with my whole heart, and I hope the entire board will too. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments, Mr. Richard, or excuse me, Mr. C. I didn't realize I was unmuted during that, so I hope I wasn't providing any interruption. The next speaker will be Mr. Richardson, who I see on, he's floating in space right now with his background. Mr. Richardson, we're ready for your comments when you are. And as a heads up for the next speaker, yep, as a heads up for the next speakers, it will be Ollie Nacy and Iona Carter. Mr. Richardson, you may start.
Thank you very much. She says, "My name is Warren Richardson. I have a new son of only four months old, so I have some time before he ends up in school. But I have become concerned about some of the teaching that I see that's being taught in Almaral County school, and in particular, Dr. Kendi's doctrine of anti-racism, which is a complete reversal of conventional morality. It has no basis in reality, yet it's being taught as if it were factual. I believe that racism is a bad thing always, but the doctrine of anti-racism teaches that properly directed racism is not only permissible, but it's essential in order to right the wrongs of the past. This so-called anti-racism is a revolutionary doctrine, turning the very definition of racism on its head. I don't believe it is appropriate for school officials to teach as truth, a concept upon which society has not reached anything like a consensus. Indeed, the doctrines of systemic racism preached by Dr. Kendi are oversimplified and easily disproven by statistical data. His racial theories represent a secular religion more than they do science, and I will not have religion shoved down my child's throat. Anti-racism is racism. Racism is evil, and I will not have my children taught to commit evil. I have the ability to homeschool my son, but many people do not and rely on public education. The mission of public education itself is threatened by the teaching of radical leftist political doctrine as if it were factual. Our children needed education based on facts, not an indoctrination based on Dr. Kendi's racist fantasies. Finally, I would like to thank the organizers of Citizen Care for organizing the Parents of Almaral County against this misguided and radical political campaign imposed upon our children. Now that concerned parents have been awakened to this campaign of misinformation, I'm confident that we will be able to restore sanity to public education. Thank you very much.
Thank you very... The next speaker will be Ollie Nacy, who I did see.
Hello.
Hi, when you're ready, you can go ahead and start your comments.
Hello, my name is Ollie Nacy. I'm a ninth grader in the Whitehall District, and I'm speaking in favor of the transgender and gender expansive protection policy. I am cisgender. I will never experience the hardships that trans people go through. I will never be bullied for being trans. I will never be asked, "Are you really a girl?" or "What's your real name?" Because I am seen as who I am, a girl, but trans people don't have that privilege. They won't always get to be who they are. And for that reason, cisgender people have no right to decide what trans people can and cannot do. Cisgender people cannot decide whether or not... Cisgender people cannot decide whether or not trans people are real. Cisgender people cannot claim that transphobia doesn't exist in a space because they wouldn't know. But that doesn't mean that we cannot support transgender people. As a cisgender person, it's my job to support and stand up for trans people and help them in every way that I can. Back in early last year, I wrote an article in my newspaper class. This article explained various sexual orientations and, more relevantly, various gender identities. I wrote this article not only to educate students who are unaware of certain terms, but also to educate students who were taught false definitions and false stereotypes of those terms. Recently, that article was discovered by adults who disagreed with it and what I was saying. The article was spread around and eventually mentioned on a national conservative news outlet. This shows that it's not just students that we have to protect, trans students from, but also adults. Biased false ideas and stereotypes all lead to bullying and harassment, and it's more common than people realize. More than half of surveyed transgender youth said that they at some point seriously considered killing themselves. Not because of being transgender, but because of how they were treated because of it. This policy could lower those numbers and save the lives of trans youth in ACPS. Those who are cisgender and against the policy shouldn't get to determine the outcome because it doesn't affect them. They are posing out of hate. Trans students have as much of a right to a safe education as anyone else, and measure should be taken to ensure that that is how it stays. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Nacy, and I always take a second to say thank you so much for coming to speak as a student. We appreciate hearing your voice. The next speaker will be Ayana Carter, and as a heads up after that, it will be Holly Duke and then Seth Oldham. So Ayana, I saw on.
Yes, I'm here.
Great, we can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Okay, so first off, I want to say that I appreciate the responsibilities you all have agreed to take on. And I truly believe that most of you really just want what's best for our kids. But the policy as it stands, I don't believe is going to accomplish that. Number one, it's incredibly troubling to read that the school is giving itself the power to assist children with hiding things from parents based on their own interpretations of situations. If the school believes there are abuse issues at home, CPS should be called and someone with the knowledge and authority to handle this situation should be allowed to do so. We pay taxes and give our trust to enable our schools to educate our kids in a safe environment, but we do not agree to sign over our rights as parents the moment kids enter school grounds. Secondly, in the hearing for the court case that you all list as being part of the basis for these policies, it clearly states the statistical fact that point seven percent of teenagers identify as transgender or gender expansive. That means that for me personally, as a parent of students at Henley Western and Brownsville, that means less than ten percent, ten students at Henley and approximately ten students at Western may identify as the group that this policy is being created for. So we're saying that those eight to ten individuals are more deserving of our whole consideration than the other nine to twelve hundred students whose feelings won't matter as much if the given policy is put forth as it stands. The primary issue is from myself and my children who attend these schools, the rules involving the bathroom, locker room, overnights, and sports. As it stands, the policy states that students may use the bathroom or locker room. They want to based on the gender they consistently asserted at school, even if it changes from day to day. What makes it consistently inserted, asserted? Where are those guidelines? I don't see this anywhere listed in the policy. And really, those places are segregated based on sex, not gender, and that's how they should be. How are the feelings of the male students being forced to undress in front of a person with female body parts? Dealing with said person walking in as they are exposed at the urinal? Or girls being forced to undress in front of persons with male body parts being taken into consideration? I also feel fear that faculty will be made to feel powerless for fear of being fired, for hurting someone's feelings, and will stand by as kids who are not mature enough to make good conscious, conscientious decisions, take advantage.
Ms. Carter, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you so much for providing comment. The next speaker will be Holly Duke, who I see on and unmuted, ready to go.
Hi, thank you. I'm Holly Duke. I am the mother of a seventh grader in Almaron County in the Ravanna District. And I wanted to speak in support of the strategic plan, especially as it values equity and promotes anti-racism in education. I am convinced that my own lack of an accurate education in American history left me diminished, and it was shrouded in white supremacy. And it not only left me diminished, it left my community diminished, and we must do better for our children. We can do better. The inequities addressed in the report should be a wake-up call for all of us. The racial disparities in graduation rates and access to gifted education and in school suspension are not up for debate. They're real. They are not an ideology, and it's past time to take action. So as the plan continues to take shape, I hope to see more detailed information on the financial investment and the resources that will be provided to families who we have failed in this community. I'll be eager to see how families and students will be informed clearly on their rights and supported as they navigate the systems of enforcement for these policies. And I see that as unique from the effort of educating white folks about racism. So I think this only works if we see real financial investment in helping students, especially BIPAC students and their families, access their rights. So again, I want to say thank you. I'm excited to join with you on this work. It is beyond time. Let's make more opportunities, go around, and invest in the future of all children to make our whole community a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments, Ms. Duke. It's perfectly timed. The next speaker will be Seth Oldham, and for the courtesy of everyone listening and other school board members, we are halfway done with public comment at this point. So the next speaker will be Seth Oldham, followed by Rebecca Templeman, and then Chad Cecil.
Hi, my name is. Thank you. My name is Seth Oldham. I'm in the Samuel Miller District. And I am the father of a non-binary rising twelfth grader and transgender rising tenth grader. Like so many people who've spoken before me, I'm also not a racist or a bigot or for discrimination in any kind. And so I'm encouraged by the fact that the education policymakers in Virginia are trying to come up with ways to make the my kids' learning experience a safe and comfortable one. And I hope that you all will do what you can to support and implement that policy. Like everybody here, all of you, all the people that have spoken for this and the people that have spoken against it, I'm sure. I love my children very, very much. When each of them separately told me that their gender identities were not what I had thought, I was scared and sad because I knew that that was going to put them on a path through life that was a lot harder than the one that I had imagined for them. And since this started three years ago, things have not been easy. But my kids have delighted me as they have become their authentic selves and as they work through the challenges of adolescence. Those challenges are enormous even for kids whose biology is not at odds with their gender identities. Having a safe place at school can make a huge difference in whether or not they rise to those challenges. And the policy that we're looking at and talking about here can go a long way to help make that happen. I hope that you all will support it with all of the energy that you have and know that this really will make a really big difference in the lives of real people. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Oldham. The next speaker will be Rebecca Templeman, who I see on.
Hi, thank you. There's no greater pleasure than to come into the public forum with our deeply held beliefs and to express them. We live in Crozay and we moved to Almaron County in nineteen ninety-three. I'm a college graduate, the author of seven books, and grandmother to eight children. As a local real estate broker, I have proudly testified since two thousand to the above-average education my children have received in the Western District schools. But tonight, I come before you as a Jack Jewett, called to tell everybody about something dangerous that I think will harm our schools. The policy you're being asked to consider leaves no doubt that socialism has found a home in the central office. We know that the Henley pilot curriculum is authorized by a zealous change agent who does not live here. It advances a racially charged hypothesis. I've read the curriculum. CCAR blames the oppressors, singling out a race of people and/or a particular religious group while claiming victim status for others. History tells us why socialism fails. When the goal is to pit one group of people against another, human beings will always rebel. Seventh grade syllabus attempts to persuade with subjective cultural biases that only confuse or further divide adolescents. By the end of the eighth grade, the homeroom resembles a laboratory where CRT fails to resolve even its own racist questions. Instead, unvetted YouTube voices redefine the English language, anthropology, civics, and more. I oppose the curriculum and your policy as overreach. I object because it assumes erroneously that one race wishes to dominate another. Nothing is further from the truth, and neither is opting out an acceptable response. If CCAR is a euphemism for conformity, we must honestly reexamine its bias.
Comments are over. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next speaker, the next speaker will be Chad Cecil, followed by Rebecca Kendall and then Omar Garriot. So Chad, yep, I see him. When you're ready.
Hi, my name is Chad Cecil, and I'm the parent of a rising fourth and sixth grader in the Whitehall District. Our children have loved their experience at Brownsville Elementary. All of the teachers, administrators, and staff there are amazing. However, as a result of the school board's continuing actions and inaction over the past year, I've lost confidence in the leadership of ACPS, and sadly, we are pulling our children from ACPS this coming school year. I believe the overwhelming majority of people on both sides of these issues have the best interests of our children in mind. As a result, it must be possible for residents, parents, and teachers and administrators to freely express their opinions without threats, personal attacks, or fear of losing their jobs. I am absolutely anti-racist and against any form of discrimination. Wherever racism or discrimination exists in our country, it needs to be rooted out. I am also absolutely heartbroken for any child that feels unwelcome or unsafe anywhere in our community, and particularly at school. It is our responsibility as parents and leaders to do everything possible to make all children welcome and safe. These are goals and objectives I hope we all agree on. The hard work is getting there. Unfortunately, this is where I lose confidence in this school board. It seems unwilling to find common ground with a large percentage of those in the county that share the same goals but see big problems with the actual policy and curriculum recommendations. It seems unwilling to ensure that it is creating a school environment that doesn't discriminate against children who believe in God. It seems unwilling to stop the teaching of unproven assumptions and opinions as facts. It seems unwilling to ensure that all ACPS employees feel safe to express their opinions. It seems unwilling to critically evaluate the potential unintended consequences resulting from the intersectionality of their own policies. There has to be a better way to ensure that all children are welcome, safe, and free from discrimination and bias. Thanks.
Thank you so much for those comments, Mr. Cecil. The next speaker, oh, sorry. The next speaker will be Rebecca Kendall, who I see on. Ms. Kendall, whenever you're ready.
Hi, thank you. My name's Rebecca Kendall. I'm a parent in the Whitehall magistrate or district and have two kids in Henley and Western. I want to thank the board for taking its proactive stance to adopt a comprehensive policy for affirming transgender and non-binary students. I'm a mental health practitioner and cannot be overstated the importance of a safe and welcoming climate for transgender and gender expansive students. The policy itself states that eighty-four percent of trans students and seventy percent of non-binary students experience bullying in school on a regular basis. And I think if any of us can think back about our own schooling and education, despite parents saying, "Oh, I'm not biased. I'm not racist." We all know that kids who are different are bullied in our schools. And trans and non-binary students need our protection and support. As a mental health practitioner, it is deeply concerning that forty-two percent of trans and gender expansive students have seriously contemplated suicide. This policy will save lives. So I thank you very much for your support. I also think it's really critical that our students who are not trans or non-binary, who may be cisgender, that they learn the humility of reflection and self-awareness and self-reflection. This is a twenty-first century skill that we're teaching our kids. Every single business, private sector, public sector are needing to start diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives because we are not learning these things in traditional education. So thanks for your support of this policy.
Ms. Kendall, thank you for those comments. The next speaker will be Omar Garriot.
Hey, y'all. Y'all means all. I'm Omar Whitehall. I'm just an old ACPS parent now, but I started my career as a third-grade public school teacher. And I was woefully unprepared when a transgender student showed up in my class on the first day. And I wish my district would have had my back with an explicit policy. So I stand in support of the transgender and gender expansive policy being introduced tonight. I've read it. It's eleven pages, not thirty-five. And I do trust y'all. I do trust the schools. For me, this is simple, and it's and it's the same thing as the courageous conversations. What creates the best environment for every student, like Ollie, who we heard from earlier, to thrive academically and socially, emotionally? We grown-ups, we have a responsibility to ensure that. We have a responsibility to Ollie. We have a responsibility to do everything we can to make school as non-hostile a place as possible. We heard earlier that north of eighty percent of transgender kids are bullied, harassed, even assaulted at school. School must also be as welcoming a place as possible. And here's the beauty of inclusivity. It is by definition not zero-sum. It is not binary. And guess what? Neither is the world that we live in. It expands the pie. It makes room for every young person, every family, at no cost to others. And it is a posture that schools and we grown-ups around them must maintain. We must show our kiddos what it actually means to love thy neighbor as thyself. Kids can check out a school for a number of reasons. Let's lock arms as their caretakers and role models and try our level best to take one reason off the table. I strongly support the ACPS policy on the treatment of transgender and gender expansive students. Anything less amounts to the school system endorsing bullying. Thanks, y'all, and don't forget, y'all means all.
Nothing wrong with saying y'all. Thank you for those comments, Mr. Garriot. The next speaker will be William Robinson, followed by David Wallace and then Nancy Koenig. Mr. Robinson, I see you on.
Hello, my name is William Robinson. I'm a parent of a student in the Whitehall School District, and I'm so excited for her to start first grade and think about what I want for her. An environment that affirms her, that loves her, that grants her opportunity to grow and be cared for so she can help care for others. And I think also about how difficult life can be for a child, even if they have those things. I had all those things. I have privilege. I have identity, a school set affirmed me. And I still, in fourth grade, when I was not feeling part of a community, when I was feeling left out, had incredibly dark thoughts. And I'm so grateful that I was, had an identity, had people that affirmed me. Because I can't imagine what it would have been like if that wasn't true, like wasn't true for someone I'll call for purposes of this meeting, David. Another person in my fourth grade class, whose identity as a transgender student was not affirmed and who did commit suicide when he was in high school. And I'm just so grateful for a school to be in a community with a school board that will stand up and do the bare minimum to say, "We're going to affirm the identity of this, of students." Cut suicide rates in half and ensure that we are creating a community where every student can be loved and who. and ensure that we are creating a community where every student can be loved and who they need to be." So thank you, school board, for standing up to affirm their identities, for standing up for against bullying and preventing and intervening in that, for ensuring that students have access to the facilities that they choose. And we have reams of research and experience saying that that is only helpful to those students and hurtful to no one. And also, if anything, tonight should show the support of your anti-racism policy that promotes interracial dialogue and courageous conversation so that we can bridge the type of divides we're talking about, understand one another, and create a more holistic and beautiful community. Thank you, school board, for your courage, for your love. It's deeply appreciated.
Thank you so much for those comments, Mr. Robinson. The next speaker will be David Wallace. I see him in the room, but he's muted. Nope, still muted. The following speaker will be Nancy Koenig. So Nancy, if you're in here.
Do not see in the meeting.
Okay, let me note that. I'll call the list at the end of the people that weren't not here. Sam Parks. Who I do see here.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
I'm Sam Parks from the White. Okay, I'm Sam Parks. I'm from the Whitehall District. Board, I wanted to convey a recent experience I had with Alamo County Schools. We engaged a school psychologist and educational specialist to do a learning assessment for our child. They spent several attentive hours with our child. In the end, produced an incredible twelve-page analysis. It was this beautiful vision of what public education can and should be. Staff joyfully bringing their expertise to bear to support educational achievement at full consent of the parents in such a way that empowers parents and child alike. At the other end of the spectrum is a corrupted vision of public education. Like any institution, it drifts towards an inflated view of its own role and mission. Rather than seeing itself as embedded within a web of community and family ties, it instead begins to see its role as engineering cultural and social outcomes. Nothing entices it like the idea of progress. In the name of progress, ACPS indoctrinates children into dogmas of racial grievance and power jockey. It teaches radical ideas of sexual autonomy and gender fluidity, alienating students from their own bodies. Far exceeding the limits of parental consent, it goes so far as to suggest punitive action against parents who resist their gender revolution. It effectively declares itself the parents of this generation, the engineers of the future. Equity will produce at whatever the cost it deems fitting. For this district has lost the plot. My message to the board is this. You have moral agency. Whatever cultural pressure is bearing down on you, you can do the right thing. Reject C-Car, reject this overreaching transgender policy, and reject a strategic plan that seeks to codify this institutional corruption. And to these teachers out there who object to this radical new direction, know that you have community support and cover. Be bold and be of good courage. Yes, you may end up on someone's list. Yes, you may end up drawing the ire of a certain administrator. But you have been entrusted with our children and you were born for such a time as this. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Parks. So the next speaker technically would be looping back to Mr. Wallace. I sent him a message. He has not replied. I do not know if he's on, even though he's in the room. Following that will be Susan Reed, who I can see is still connecting to audio. And I'm assuming having issues. Ms. Reed, can you hear me? Okay, so I'm gonna make note to go back to her. And then following that will be Claire Rude, who I just saw come in and is connected. Ms. Rude, you'll be next. I know it's kind of short notice since you just got in here. And I'd like to announce to the people that are still in the waiting room that you need to change or rename your Zoom icons that we know who you are. If it's just the phone number or no identifying name, we don't know who you are and we don't know when to admit you. So if you can click on your name on the three little dots in the corner, you can rename yourself so we can identify you. So with that notification and giving that gave Ms. Rude a little time, it is your turn.
Hi, so I'm Claire Rude. I'm the mother of three children in the Samuel Miller District. I'm also a recently retired public health nurse and a former teacher and social worker. So I have a little bit of history with the topics that are on discussion tonight. I wanted to speak in support of the new policy for transgender and gender expansive students. I think, I really wanted to applaud Alamo County Schools. I've been really impressed with these strong anti-bullying stamps. And I think this aligns with that extremely well. At the Health Department, I worked with the HIV pre-exposure prophylaxis program, worked a lot with this community. And I think the speakers before me have done a wonderful job of explaining the statistics and why it's important to provide an inclusive environment for children, the suicide rates. Just, it's about empathy, as one person said. And this policy threatens no one and benefits many students. And these are our children. They are our children's friends. They are actual real children. And so I wanted to applaud Alamo County Schools for this new policy. I think it's exceptional. I also wanted to applaud it for the courageous conversations. I'm actually looking forward to win that spread to other schools because it's conversations that we have with our children. And I think it's really important that the children get an education that I didn't get in Virginia schools growing up, that I really wish I had. And I don't think that I got accurate education. And that's what I really want for my children. And I think that's what we all want for our children. It's just to grow up to be really strong, wonderful humans that accept others and make the world a better place. So I wanted to thank you all.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Rude. The next speaker, I believe I might have said Ann Jordan, but for the sake of my record-keeping, Ms., I'm gonna go back to Ms. Susan Reed because I believe she is connected to audio at this point. So Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Great. Go ahead and leave your comment.
There. Um, I'm Susan Reed. I'm in the Rio District. And I am so thankful that my kids are already out of school. Instead of concentrating on the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic, the board and superintendent seem determined to be social justice warriors, something that doesn't belong in school and will not help test scores. In addition, you are dividing kids and robbing them of their innocence. There's no time to go over all the crazy things going on in schools these days. So let's just take an issue that's likely to come up with your policy since you said that genders should be able to do clubs or sports if the gender they think they are. So men and women are biologically different, but it's science, my friends. Try comparing the records in male sports and female sports. They are not the same. If they were, why would we even have male and female sports instead of just sports? Even if a male goes through some hormone treatments and surgery, it will not change all the biology. Caitlyn Jenner, I will remind you, is a transgender woman who also won a gold medal in the Olympic decathlon as a male. That's a set of credentials that I will wager that none of you have. And Caitlyn does not think it's fair to allow transgender women to compete against biological men. Would you deprive females of records, honors, et cetera, by allowing competition with a bio male? Would you do that to your daughter? This is likely to come up. If you don't have a daughter, I'd like you to imagine you do. What if your biologically female daughter lost a state competition to a trans woman and asked why that was allowed? Will you look her in the eye and say, "Sorry, honey, even though we taught you to resist peer pressure when something was wrong, we didn't have the guts to do that ourselves." And that goes for a lot of things going on in the school system these days. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Reed. The, let me pause this. The next speaker will be Ann Jordan, who I see.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Ms. Jordan.
Hi. I feel like I'm being pushed into having to respond to this because it's so concerning to me. But you're not giving the community adequate time to respond to these massive changes. Equity, to me, does not mean equality. It means racism. It's racism towards kids like my daughter because it holds them back to ensure that the outcome is favorable to others, not based on any merit, but because of the color of the skin they were born with. That is the definition of racism that Martin Luther King fought against. What you now are pushing is Freudian Marxist dictatorship. You're experimenting with our children and going against thousands of years of human experience. This new agenda you are pushing encourages men to abuse women by competing in their female sports and entering their bathrooms. Men in prisons are already identifying as women as they can be transferred to women's prisons. You're creating a society that will be exploiting our young women and girls. You've been, this is a huge criticism of Western civilization. But what you're criticizing is exactly what you're doing. You're creating racism, sexism, child abuse, and you're sowing the seeds of hatred between the sexist races and ethnicities and undermining the family unit. This generation's agenda will be looked on history as one of the most vile episodes in Western civilization. You are doing this knowing it's against the will of the parents. And I can assure you, I care more about my daughter than you do. When, and if not, when, not if, but when a girl gets assaulted in a bathroom or playing a sport, you will be held accountable. There should be no limitations on what you should be held accountable for. Suicide, self-mutilation, bullying, and harassment. You're taking away our authority for our children, of our children. You're undermining us with this hateful agenda. And shame on you, the school board of Alamo County, Virginia, for pushing this evil and harmful agenda and grooming children to be exploited. Yes, I know, I'm over my time because I'm a conservative. I got it. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Jordan. The next speaker will be Laura Brunk, who I see on.
Hi, I just wanted to say I support this bill. I think it's really positive. I think all students should be protected. And I obviously disagree with what the woman before me was stating. I was a student in the Alamo County Schools and I had some friends who were trans. And obviously, this was a couple of years ago. Well, not obviously, but it was a couple of years ago and they definitely had difficulties. So I think that was just an issue of the county not being prepared to deal with trans students. So I think it's really positive that they're making decisions now to become fully prepared to support trans students. I think it's just the county's responsibility to protect its students and to support its students in their personal choices. So yeah, this is for me more about supporting students, making sure that they can stay in the school, that they're not being harassed or bullied, and that they have the freedom to express themselves and make the decisions for themselves that they need to make. So I definitely support this bill. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for those comments, Ms. Brunk. The next speaker will be another Brunk, Lydia Brunk, who I also see on. Lydia, when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Lydia Brunk. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a resident of the Samuel Miller District who attended Monticello High School. I think we all understand that a student cannot learn effectively if their basic needs are not met, if they do not feel safe and secure in their learning environment. It is for this reason that we offer free breakfast and lunch programs. For example, a student cannot learn if they are focused on struggling to endure hunger pangs and they cannot learn if they are focused on struggling to endure a transphobic environment, to say nothing of the fact that they should not have to do so. I concur with the statement that schools have a unique and powerful opportunities to support gender expansive students. I am strongly in favor of the policy that protects the rights of trans students and maps the ways that educators can support them. I know there has been opposition to this measure, but I frankly cannot bring myself to engage with these arguments. There is a vast difference between asking for control and respect in the way that you and your gender is spoken about and addressed and asking for control of the way that others' genders are spoken about and addressed. I cannot summon an iota of respect for parents who would ask schools to further marginalize trans and gender expansive students in order to protect their children from engaging with ideas that they find challenging. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for those comments, Ms. Brunk. Make a note here. So the next speakers, we have three more on the initial list before we loop through and see if we caught it, can catch anybody that missed their slot. So the next three speakers will be Margaret Gotorc, who I see on, followed by Robert Mappus and then Victoria McCullough.
Is spoken about and addressed and asked for all the way under.
I think that was coming from David Wallace's. And Mr. Wallace, if you're on, we looped back a few times and we were having trouble connecting with you. So I will loop back to you as soon as we get through these three. So Ms. Gotorc, if you're ready.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Gotorc. I'm a resident of the Samuel Miller District. I'd like to recommend a revision to the draft policy for the treatment of transgender and gender expansive students. The policy correctly cites FERPA when it defines a student's gender expansive status as an education record protected by FERPA, assuming that the student or the, you know, has, or the parent has shared that information. It's important to note that FERPA gives parents certain rights with respect to their minor child's education records. First, FERPA mandates that parents have the right to access the content within their child's education records. Second, under FERPA, a school may not disclose personally identifiable information from a student's educational record to a third party without written consent. The draft policy seeks to revoke these parental rights in at least the following ways in instances where Alamo County School officials conclude that parents will not be supportive of a child's gender transition. Number one, the policy would allow the school to keep a student's gender expansive status from their parents. Two, the policy would also allow the school to disclose personally identifiable information of a minor to a third party, a health professional, acting in support of a gender transition without informed consent from parents. Federal privacy rights that protect education records are legal requirements. Whether or not parents will or won't be receptive to information in educational records does not absolve Alamo County Public Schools of these requirements. So my ask tonight is that you all consider amending the transgender policy to include the required consent and involvement from parents consistent with FERPA. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much for those comments. The next speaker will be Robert Mappus.
Ms. not in the meeting.
Okay, so I'll put a little mark. Victoria McCullough. If you're on. There is one person in the waiting room that has the name iPad. If you would change your name, we could hopefully get you admitted. I'm assuming you're on the list if you have the link, but perhaps not. And so right now, I'm gonna go ahead and cycle through. We'll start with, actually to, yeah, we'll start with Mr. Wallace because he's actually been in the room. I think he was having audio issues. So Mr. Wallace, if you are on now and you can unmute and give your comment, that would be appreciated. Okay. So now I'm just gonna go to the top of the list and move my way down. So Tony Bruno. Do not see. John Smith. Again, do not see. Chardon Jenks, I see.
Your name. We can hopefully get you admitted. I'm assuming you're on the list.
Is there a mail?
Yep, Mr. Wallace, I can hear you now, but I just, I just called another speaker. Please keep paying attention, keep your audio on, and I will call you after the next speaker. So Chardon, if you're ready to speak and you can unmute, now would be a great time. You're muted if you're speaking to me.
Okay.
Yep, now I can hear you.
All right, ready? Go ahead.
Yep.
All right. My name is Chardon Jenks and I live in the Ravanna District. I'm asking you to stand strong to protect every child in this district by not adopting the Department of Education's transgender issue policy that directly threatens our children's physical safety and privacy rights. This policy forces every K through twelve school to allow boys identifying as girls, for instance, to use the girls' bathrooms or change in female locker rooms. And this can be done without ever notifying parents. We need to say yes to protecting our kids and no to being forced into adopting. And no to being forced into adopting sexualized political agendas. I am deeply concerned about a child's right to expect physical safety and privacy and vulnerable areas. Such as locker rooms, restrooms and overnight trip sleeping quarters. We hear a lot about transgender rights. And we can all agree that every child should be protected from harm. But no one ever talks about the harm done to very young girls who feel powerless. To expect physical privacy in the presence of biological males. Not to mention young men who don't want to change in front of biological girls. The bottom line is we need to protect children. We need to be proactive in protecting our children's safety and privacy. As well as the rights of our county parents to safeguard the minds, hearts and bodies of their children. It is possible to find compassionate ways to protect every child. Including kids struggling with gender without sacrificing some children's safety on the altar of political agendas. If you enact this, you may be enabling predators and creating victims. On a massive scale and you will bear the, you may bear the responsibility for that. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Jenks.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Mr. Wallace, if you're there. You need to, you need to unmute and speak now forever hold your peace or until the next public comment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I am alive and well. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, you can go ahead and begin, sir.
Okay, great. I love Zoom calls. In my third life as a teacher in a private school, I understand the technical. Problems that come with it and also delays. And you guys hosting these meetings, I appreciate you doing this. I was never one to speak in public. Spent 22 years as a cop in Alamo County, 22 years in the army. And what I see now really. Truly. Scares me what's going on in my tax supported schools here in Alamo County. CRT is a Marxist program. That is hell bent on isolating, dividing. And diminishing our ability to work together as a community. And if you bring forth this policy. It will destroy our community even more and fragmented even more than it is right now. I don't hate anybody. I spent my time defending my constitution. My citizens. And my community. I love people of all colors, all religions, all backgrounds. So to adopt policies that are going to be detrimental to. Our young women, our young men. We cannot let that stand. We must work together as a community. I just ask and plead. As somebody that cares about this community that's worked and put my heart and soul in this community for 22 years. But please put the brakes on this. And look at it a little bit more closely. There are a lot of political agendas coming into the mix. And things that are. Here to destroy us as a community. Ronald Reagan said, there's nothing wrong with America that can't be fixed with what's right with America. We need to get back to that instead of dividing into camps. Sexualities, religions, colors, races, oppressors. Oppressees, whatever you want to put it in. We need to come together as a community. And love our kids, love our community and do the very best we can give them a first class. Education that's going to put us on top academically, scientifically. And every aspect of society to move our culture, move our people forward. And if we adopt crud, excuse me, stuff like CRT and make that part of a curriculum. Western Alamo or Henley, they said you can't opt out.
Mr. Wallace. Yes, Mr. Wallace, I'm sorry to cut you short, but your time's up.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing comments. The. Next speaker cycling through is going to be Nancy Conick, who I do not see on. Carol Thorpe. I don't know why I'm talking louder. It makes no difference to people that are on the computer screen and not hiding in the back of the room. Robert Mathis. And Victoria McCullough. There is one person in the waiting room. I'm sorry you didn't get in. We didn't know who you were. And with that, that concludes public comment. I would like to just remind everyone that you can always send comments to the school board. I know that there were. Just a handful of people that didn't get in on this lottery system. Two of them already sent an email which we were able to read before the meeting. So please feel free to send your comments if you weren't able to finish them during the public comment period. With that, I hand it back over to you, Mr. Page.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carlson, for conducting our public comment. Looking at our agenda. We are at about eight twenty five and. We are sort of a little bit behind schedule. So if there is no objection, we'll take a 10 minute break now. And then resume the agenda. Any objections to that? Okay, 10 minute break. We will reconvene at eight thirty five. Thank you. Okay, it's eight thirty five roughly. And we are ready to resume our agenda. Item eight one, the new transgender policy, Mr. Holden.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to introduce to you the. ACPS draft policy on the treatment of transgender and gender expansive students. This policy has been developed in compliance with Virginia statutory and federal case law to ensure a positive, safe and nurturing learning environment for all students. Free from discrimination and harassment. In nineteen, in 2020. The General Assembly enacted Virginia Code Section 22.1 dash 23.3. And requires two things. First. It mandated that the Virginia Department of Education develop a model policy and guidance. That all local school boards in Virginia could follow in creating their own policies. Second. The law requires that every local school board. Have before the beginning of the 2021 22 school year. A policy no less comprehensive than the guidance published by the Virginia Department of Education. So both the guidance of the VDOE and our policy. Are aligned. And contain guidance on various issues regarding transgender and gender expansive students. Issues including compliance with applicable non discrimination laws. Prevention of bullying and harassment. Maintenance of school records, protection of student privacy. And student participation in school activities and events and the use of school facilities. In addition, there is recent federal case law. In the Fourth Circuit, U.S. Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit in the Grimm versus Gloucester County School Board case. Which addresses. The use of restrooms and other facilities by transgender and gender expansive students. Just last week, the United States Supreme Court. Declined to take the case on appeal, which means that the decision of the Fourth Circuit in the Grimm case is the law of the land. At this time, so we wanted to make sure that our policy conforms to. The Grimm case as well as the new statute in Virginia requiring all school boards to develop their own school board policy. We are going to provide an information session on Wednesday, July 28th, where. We will address the, with the community, the. policy in greater detail, the specific issues and addresses and respond. We get questions in the chat, respond to them thereafter so that everyone can have a full and fair understanding of what the policy is intended to accomplish. Then at the school board's first meeting in August, on August twelfth, we will bring the final draft policy to you for approval. With that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. You said the information session was on July twenty-eighth, right? Okay. Are there any questions or comments from any board members from Mr. Holden?
Mr. Chair, I the only thing that causes me a certain level of concern is the paragraph on under privacy and confidentiality. In some cases, gender expansive students may not want their parents to know about their gender expansive and transitioning status. These situations must be addressed on a case-by-case basis and will require schools to balance the goal of supporting the student with the requirement that the parents be kept informed about their children. The most important consideration in such situations is the physical and mental health and safety of the student. That just seems very, very vague to me. And the vagueness just concerns me. I mean, on a case-by-case basis, I just wish we could we could look at that language a little bit and see if we can't get a better because I think that they're they're and I'll just be honest, if if I mean, this is something that I would think a parent should know about because it is a fairly fundamental issue and if if there's a reason for the for the a specific reason for the parents not to know, I get that, but I think it should be it should be clear so that so that we don't have we don't have employees put in the position of making a very tough call themselves. That's just and that's just my opinion. I just I think we could use better language.
Mr. Holden, could you address that concern?
The the issue, Mr. Olberg, is that there are lots of potential factors. And what we are trying to do is balance the right of a student to privacy with the parent's right to know. I'd like to be able to suggest to you that there are ways that we can say if this particular event happened, then we'll, you know, tell the parents if this event happened, we may not be able to. It's really going to be an assessment of many different factors. Let me just give you an example. If a child wanted to be called a different name and teacher says, that's fine, and we do that with children now who want to be called by a nickname, we would do that. And we would not disclose that particular confidence necessarily at the start because it doesn't require any any particular medical or mental health guidance or or anything of that nature. So we would do that. However, if a parent then came to the school and said, did this happen? And we would certainly say yes. And if the parent said, well, that's fine, we would go forth. If the parent said, you know what, I'm not comfortable with that. I direct you not to do that, we would take a different position. If there is a an accommodation that a child may want that may be medical in nature or require the assistance of a nurse, I I don't know exactly what that would be. But let's assume that's the case. Under the policy, what we would do is we would try to preserve the student's confidence. But we would tell the student that we would not be able to provide that accommodation without parental permission. We're not going to go and just, you know, disclose confidence is because the child may not be comfortable with that. Maybe coming to the teacher or the school because they don't feel that they're supported. But that said, we would not then just take it upon ourselves to make a decision to tell the the student that we will be happy to do what the student has asked us to do, whether we have parental permission or not. So in that situation, we would we would it would be the compromise. We would keep the confidence. However, we would let the student know that until we had parental permission, we cannot grant the request. Again, each request could be different. It's going to have to be evaluated. We struggle hard with both internally and with counselors and the gay straight alliances in all of the high school to try to come up with something that would be more specific. But because there was such a wide array of issues that could arise, we felt for purposes of policy that we would be general and then try to address things as we get more experience with the issues that could arise under the policy.
So so let me let me let me ask this, Russ. It the policy doesn't say it says these situations must be addressed on a case-by-case basis. Okay, but by whom? Is it the principal? Is it the counselor? Is it the nurse? Is it the teacher? I I think I I think I think we should have greater clarity because I I don't want to have a teacher make a well, this and read this policy and think, okay, well, I'm supposed to do this and then find out, well, wow, that wasn't your call. I I just I I just think it'd be it it I think it would. I think we would head off some potential problems if that language was a little bit tighter. I don't know how to make it tighter, and so I apologize. I wish I could come in and say, well, I think this language, I don't have language that does it. I just I it just the the language just concerns me a lot.
Mr. Rick, we can take a look and to see whether we can better address who in the school should be involved. Again, we try to limit the those who know to those who must know. But that said, we certainly could look at the types of individuals within the school, whether it's up to the principal's level, a nurse, the the counselor, where the teacher feels that there's support and would not have to make a decision without reaching out to whoever else may have input into this situation.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I had a quick comment just in response to, I think, some misinformation or not not misinformation necessarily, but I would just encourage parents to please go on and and read through the policy if you have concerns because it's not always the way it's set out. So like one thing that I do think it's worth calling attention to is that we don't regulate sports within the state. That's actually the Virginia High School League. And so our transgender policy is going to allow people to play intramural sports, which a lot of times are coed to begin with. They were when I was in college. So we would follow the guidelines, whatever the state guidelines are for the Virginia High School League. Another thing that's worth noting is that although we're encouraging, the policy is encouraging people to be able to use restroom facilities and locker room facilities that are gender affirming. There is a caveat, you know, there's a carve-out that any student, and that means any student that is uncomfortable with whatever setup should have access to an individual locker room or restroom that they can use. And I think that's worth noting. It's worth reading through the policy. I appreciated all the people who who provided comment, and I just want to make sure that people are looking at the document and not just going off of what they're hearing because it's kind of interesting to read through it.
And my information may be a couple of years late, but Ms. Carlson, I mean, to your point with those carve-outs you mentioned at the end, when the board discussed this a few years ago, at that point in time, those carve-outs existed. And so to your point, they are there to be used. Okay, thank you, Ms. Carlson and Mr. Alcarro. And so, Mr. Holden, you will be looking at ways of trying to clarify the positions responsible for doing certain things that Mr. Olberg addressed, right?
We'll take a look at that, Mr. Page.
Okay.
Grandma, I actually just had one more comment if you were just closing up. I I Mr. Holden, I just really wanted to thank you for your work on this. I I think it's a really, really thoughtful and good policy. And and I always appreciate both your legal work and then also, you know, working with students to craft it. And I just I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you very much. It's appreciated.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Holden.
Thank you.
All right. Next COVID update, Dr. McLaughlin and Ms. Gomez is Alvin Gomez.
Good evening, board members. Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division. And Mr. Page, actually, I'll be flying solo on this one tonight, so bear with me as I as I go through our COVID update. As you all remember, we have a multi-tiered approach to to opening or reopening our schools during the COVID pandemic. And one of the things that the board has asked us to consistently give them updates on is the level of community transmission. And so tonight I can share with you the latest numbers that we have. These are the Albemarle County figures for the past four weeks. And this is our case incidence rate, which is the number of cases per one hundred thousand people in Albemarle County. You can see that that has has gotten really to this week has zeroed out for us. It's remained pretty consistently low since June seventeenth, although the numbers are not have neither hit a threshold of fourteen or more consecutive days increasing or decreasing. So the the Health Department considers this to be fluctuating. One of the other things that we look at is the floating seven-day percent positivity. That's the number of cases that are coming back positive from the tests that we are giving. And you can again see that that is staying below one percent for the past month, and that is in fact been decreasing for for more than fourteen days. So that meets the threshold for a decreasing trend there. We also look at the city of Charlottesville. Their numbers are similarly low, but but not quite as low as Albemarle. They're fluctuating between about fourteen and twenty for the case incidence rate. And that number has been going up a bit since July first. And their case incidence rate is also slightly higher than ours, but again, still below two percent, one of the lower thresholds that we've seen since the start of the pandemic that's here. And then finally, I'll share with you, we look also at our CDC core indicators, which takes just a slightly different look at at those numbers. And you can see here that our core indicator for percent for case incidence, rather, for the county is at nine point two. And our percent positivity for the county is at zero point five percent. Those are both in the lowest level of community transmission rates. And you can see at the in this graph up at the top that for the past four weeks now, we've been at the lowest levels of community transmission. So so that is really positive news for us around the state of the pandemic. We use these numbers to determine the level of of school impact. Right now, we've got, we continue to have zero or very sporadic cases in our schools that with with the folks that are there right now for summer school. It's not impacting student absenteeism, nor is it impacting staff capacity. When we combine these figures with our transmission rates, which are actually here in the in the low, we see that we're at the lowest level of impact to the schools. And and we have been there thankfully for the last couple of board meetings that we've presented the COVID update to everyone. And so that is the the latest on where we are with with our COVID numbers. And I would be happy to take any questions or hear any comments from the board.
Questions, comments? Okay, if not, thank you.
That's my comment.
Yeah, Mr. Oliver.
I just said, thank God.
Oh, okay, right. All right, thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. We will now move to item eight-three, our strategic plan. And Dr. Haas is going to introduce this segment of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I want to say good evening again to the school board members. I also want to extend my welcome to A.J. Johnson for joining the school board. A.J., if there's anything you need, please let me know. It's it's a pleasure to work for you. It's also my pleasure to introduce Dr. McLaughlin tonight to share with you our strategic plan entitled Learning for All. Before doing so, I really want to thank Dr. McLaughlin for leading the strategic plan development process. This process has been more than a year in duration as well as thorough and comprehensive in scope, including an in-depth current state analysis of A C P S conducted by Patel for Kids. Dr. McLaughlin and his team, Jamie Gellner, Helen Dunn, Jasmine Fernandez, and Sissy Leatherwood have worked with and heard input from thousands of families through the surveys that we're doing and also during meetings, employees and community members with diversity of demographics and relationships to the school system. The street, the strategic plan before you this evening emphasizes that our school system exists to provide high-quality teaching and learning for all students. And all means all. So at this point, I'll turn things over to Dr. McLaughlin.
So good evening again, board members, and thank you, Dr. Haas, for that wonderful introduction. And as Dr. Haas said, I'm here tonight to ask you to take action on our new strategic plan for Albemarle County Public Schools, Learning for All. As you recall, in partnership with Patel for Kids, we began the process of developing our strategic plan at the beginning of the school year. And we worked through the envision phase of the portrait. We worked through the envision phase with our portrait design team and presented our portrait of an Albemarle learner to you earlier this school year. Following that, we received our current state analysis from Patel, who convened our strategic plan designing and design and writing teams who just wrapped up their work a few weeks ago. All told, we've had around two hundred staff, students, and community members join us as part of the design and writing teams. In addition, we've held community meetings throughout the school year that have been attended by hundreds of stakeholders and have surveyed the community at large about our portrait competencies and our draft plan and received thousands of responses. As you can tell, a great deal of work and community input has gone into this draft and strategic plan that we present to you now. And we believe that it's a strong reflection of what our school community feels is most important work for us to undertake over the next several years. Just yesterday, this is hot off the presses. We received a draft version of the final layout of the plan from Patel, and a copy of that has been included in tonight's board packet. You'll likely see that there are still a few tweaks that need to be made with some of the aesthetics, and we'll complete a final proofread as well. But we wanted you to have an idea of what the final product would would look like. While there may be just a couple of changes to the layout in the materials over the next couple of weeks, the heart of the plan, that's our vision, our mission, our values, our goals, objectives, strategies, and metrics, that's been finalized and that is included in the draft that you have with you tonight. So as we ask for adoption of the plan, I believe it's important to recall the work that's gone into the development of this plan. We started our work in earnest by convening our Portrait of a Learner development team. That team met five times in September and October, and the work was informed through community forums and surveys. In December, you provided us with your approval for our portrait. And the portrait included eight competencies that are adaptability, anti-racism, communication, critical thinking, creativity, empathy, learner's mindset, and social justice and inclusion. During the course of the competency development, we conducted a community survey. In the survey, we asked our community how useful the development of each competency would be to our students. The results were on a seven-point scale, so any score of four or higher indicated a positive response for that competency. As you can see here, each competency scored at least a five point six on the scale, affirming that these competencies are indeed valued by our community members. Following the development of our portrait, we convened a strategic plan design team and a strategic plan writing team. They met several times from December through April, and the team built our plan based on our portrait and our current state analysis. We followed this work with more community meetings and surveys, which were completed in May. And we shared draft surveyers, we shared the draft and the survey results with you at your June retreat. So this work has been a genuine collaborative effort involving a wide range of staff, students, and community members. And as we said before, really, thousands of people have either been a part of this process or have commented on the work through our survey tools. As Dr. Haas mentioned earlier, I would also like to thank all of those participants, but in particularly recognize Jamie Gellner, Jasmine Fernandez, Sissy Leatherwood, and Helen Dunn, who have worked tirelessly on the plan steering team throughout this entire process. We simply couldn't have gotten to where we are today without all of them. So as we ask you to take action on the plan tonight, I'd like to remind you of its highlights. We simply couldn't have gotten to where we are today without all of them. So as we ask you to take action on the plan tonight, I'd like to remind you of its highlights. So the plan outlines our vision, that all learners are engaged in authentic, challenging, and relevant learning experiences, becoming lifelong contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society. And also our mission, that working together as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We seek to build relationships with families and communities to ensure that every student succeeds, and we will know every student. It also identifies our core values of equity. We will provide every student with the level of support necessary to thrive. Excellence means we will mitigate barriers and provide opportunities for every student to be academically successful. We value family and community, which means we'll engage with and share the responsibility for student success with families and community partners. And we value wellness, that will support the physical and emotional health of our students and our staff. And the plan sets goals and objectives, and it sets, the plan also sets goals and objectives for meeting what we've outlined in the vision, mission, and values. And we have three goals, the first of which is thriving students, that we will facilitate learning experiences grounded in high expectations, networks of care, and student curiosity to ensure academic and social emotional development for all students while eliminating opportunity access and achievement gaps. That goal has three objectives that are associated with it, and that's to ensure that each student is supported to achieve their best, to develop structures that support students' academic mental health for both proactive and intervention purposes, and to increase student engagement in their own learning, in the school culture, and in student governance. In a community survey, we asked member, community members to indicate how well they believe the stated goals and objectives would help us to meet our mission. Responses were on a five-point scale, so any response with an average of three or higher indicated a positive response for that objective. And as you can see, all the objectives for this goal received a positive response. Our second goal is affirming and empowering communities. And in that, we state that ACPS commits to developing a culturally responsive environment that will respect and champion the diversity of life experiences of all stakeholders and supports the physical and mental health of our students, staff, and families, so they're actively empowered to engage in our school community. As with the first goal, that contains three objectives, that we commit to developing a culturally responsive environment that will respect and champion the diversity of life experiences of all stakeholders and supports the physical and mental health of our students, staff, and families, so they're actively empowered to engage in our school community. Our second objective is to support the physical and mental health of our students, staff, and families. And finally, we will actively empower all stakeholders to engage in our school community through effective communications and community engagement strategies. Again, you can see that all of these received positive responses from our community survey. And finally, our third goal is equitable and transformative resources. In that, we state that ACPS will attract, develop, and retain the highest-quality staff, develop sustainable and modern facilities, infrastructure, and equipment, and distribute all resources in an equitable manner to transform learning experiences and opportunities. The three objectives under this goal include attracting, developing, and retaining the highest-quality staff that will develop modern and environmentally sustainable facilities, infrastructure, and equipment, and that will provide resources in an equitable manner. Again, all of which received positive responses from our community. Finally, as community members reviewed our goals and objectives, we wanted to know how well they saw themselves reflected in the plan. And 83% of our respondents rated this question at a three or higher on a five-point scale. So as you can see, the responses to our portrait competencies and to our goals and objectives have been very positive. We feel that this plan is indeed a reflection of what's important to our community and what they hope to see from our school system. The next stage of the plan, once adopted, is our implementation phase. We've identified key strategies and metrics for each set of goals and objectives, the specifics of which can be found in the full plan. We are currently working to assign each of our strategies and metrics to a specific cabinet department for implementation. Those departments will really work on the how of the strategy implementation. At the same time, we're developing a Gantt chart to outline when we'll plan to implement and complete each of the strategies that are part of the plan over the next five years. Some strategies that you'll see may require funding. And once the plan is adopted, we'll be developing budget initiatives where appropriate for the board to consider in the next funding requests. And finally, you can expect to see the first report in our progress toward the goals of the plan in the fall 2022 State of the Division Report. So I'd like to close by reminding the board that this isn't our first strategic plan, and it, and it won't be our last. We're recommending that this plan be adopted as a five-year strategic plan. We feel that that timeframe, that's a timeframe that allows for significant progress and change for what is important to us now as a school community. Five years from now, we hope to have met the goals outlined in the plan and be ready to take on whatever our next challenge may be. I thank the board for their time tonight and hope that you'll take action on adopting our new strategic plan, "Learning for All." And I'd be happy to take any questions or hear any comments from the board.
Questions or comments from the board? If not, could we have a motion to adopt this strategic plan?
I move that we adopt the five-year strategic plan as it's been laid out for us tonight. And I'll leave it at that and come back with a comment later.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Alcarro, second by Mrs. Osborne, that we adopt the strategic plan, five-year strategic plan. Any discussion of the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Definitely, yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Alcarro, you said you had a comment?
Well, I just wanted to say that, that this is the first time that I've been on the board when the time of a strategic plan was put together. And while it's been, and you know, the, the previous one was adapted as time goes by, because as we were talking about earlier, things change, you know, changes need to be made. But Dr. McLaughlin, I'm so impressed with the level of intense work that went into this and the involvement of the community. I know several of the people, members of the community, who said they came away from the, the sessions inspired and exhausted. And so, you know, congratulations to you and your entire team on a job well done.
Thank you. It really has been a great team effort.
Any other comments? I'd like to echo what Mr. Alcarro said, Dr. McLaughlin. And also even the timeline that you presented in your introductory statements about how long this process has been on the road was impressive. So thanks to you and the entire committee for developing and implementing or preparing us to implement our strategic plan. Thank you so very, very much for your work.
Thank you very much.
Moving to our next item on our agenda, our resource utilization to support learning recovery. Ms. Schmidt will introduce this segment.
Thank you, Chair Page. Rosalind Schmidt, I'm the Chief Operating Officer. I'm just going to provide a brief introduction. As we enter this next chapter of the pandemic, we are fortunate to have multiple financial resources to support our work, including local funding that this board adopted as a part of their operating budget in May, and then multiple buckets of federal stimulus money. So tonight, Dr. Haas will present an overview of a proposed plan of how these financial resources will be utilized together for targeted investments in support of learning recovery beginning this week with summer school. So after he gives the overall plan, I will provide more specifics and the largest source of funding, which is the latest round of stimulus money from the American Rescue Plan Act, also referred to as ARP. So, Dr. Haas?
All right. Good evening again, School Board members. Thank you very much, Rosalind. I appreciate it. And so I want to just take a few minutes to provide a framework for how we allocate funding to create resources to provide our schools and educators with what they need to support students academically, physically, and socially as they return to school on August 23rd. The first goal in our strategic plan is for our students to thrive. We refer to this goal as thriving students. And we say that we will facilitate learning experiences grounded in high expectations, networks of care, and student curiosity to ensure academic and social emotional development for all students while eliminating opportunity, access, and achievement gaps. As we work toward recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, I submit a framework that is grounded in our strategic plan to help our teachers, to help our students, to thrive. This framework is a pyramid of interventions. The pyramid has tiers based on the level of support students need and receive based on formative assessments of their learning. And it begins at the base with what we refer to as a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Guaranteed means that all students will be taught the same skills and concepts, regardless of the teacher to whom they have been assigned. Viable means the curriculum is relevant and can be realistically attained within the constraints such as time for initial learning experiences. Our fiscal year '22 operating budget of $211 million includes a commitment to a guaranteed and viable curriculum and social and emotional learning, or what we call SEL. Each student will receive a comprehensive, equitable, rigorous, and standards-based education across all grade levels and subject areas. SEL strategies include responsive classroom, the advisory period, and the high school seminar. In response to student and teacher success with the initial curriculum, our schools have two ways or two overarching variables to adjust up or down the pyramid to provide extra time and support. One is the size of the instructional group or setting. The second is the intensity and frequency of progress monitoring and interventions. As we enter the 2021-22 school year, we are using supplemental, one-time recovery resources provided by federal and local sources and revised recurring local revenues to build on our baseline budget in order to primarily address the size of instructional groups and progress monitoring and interventions. As I click through this graphic, I will share highlights from our supplemental spending plan for recovery. The staffing and funding amounts provided are approximate and serve as general goals and guidelines. PPE, supplies, equipment, technology, and other expenditures are not included. This graphic is intended to illustrate how we intend to address academic, or academic learning and social emotional well-being. We often talk about professional learning communities, or what we call PLCs. One might ask, why is it important for teachers to form PLCs? The answer, to put it concisely, is so that schools can have a fully functional pyramid of interventions that supports learning at high levels for all students, or what we call "learning for all." When educational researcher and author Rick Dufour talked about the Pyramid of Interventions in his 1998 landmark book, Professional Learning Communities at Work, he provided first three and then four, a fourth key question to help achieve learning for all. A PLC should work collaboratively to determine what do we want our students to learn as a result of their experiences in school and in their classes. This becomes that guaranteed and viable curriculum. Prior to instruction, the PLC should collaborate and select and/or create frequent common formative assessments to determine whether students are learning the curriculum. When common pre-assessments and formative assessments are used, teachers in the PLC can use the results to do two things. One, provide extra time and support for students who have not learned what was expected. And two, use the results as feedback to fine-tune their instructional strategies and curriculum alignment. Again, when common pre, pre and formative assessments are used, teachers in a PLC can work together to provide learning extension experiences for students who move at a faster pace with learning, including dynamic skills-based grouping, a practice that is growing in our middle schools. As I return to the base just one more time, I want to say that this coming school year, the School Board is providing dedicated time for ACPS to work as a whole school system on truly embedding the tenets of PLC and the Pyramid of Interventions in our work toward learning for all with the one, the series of one-half days that are provided in the school system's instructional calendar. As I go through the levels of the pyramid again, I will highlight resources we are putting in place for each school to support teachers, students, and families as our work, we work our way through recovery. At the base, we're using one-time funding for our current summer school program, a greater reduction in class size for all schools in the fall that will have us below even the pre-pandemic levels for our class sizes, an added counseling position at each school designated for mental health and family support, as well as a full-time virtual school, among other base supports. In terms of assessments for learning and social emotional well-being, it is important to note that the Virginia Department of Education is beginning a pre-SOL assessment this coming year as part of what is called the Virginia Through Testing Program. Teachers will have access to that to study growth throughout the year. With regard to SEL, our Division Recovery Team selected the DESA Assessment, which stands for the DEVERO Elementary Student Strength Assessment as a universal screener for social emotional well-being. We are increasing our response to intervention and extension of learning resources for schools by doubling intervention funding allocated to each school, as well as increasing access to intervention and enrichment activities by providing a van for each elementary and middle school that will be housed on site. We will also bring back the Check and Connect Program to build stronger relationships with students and families in greater need of assistance. And finally, as we firm up the dollar amounts from one-time resources going into the fall, we are planning to use unallocated funds to provide extra summer resources for intervention, extension, and enrichment going into the summer of 2022. Much of what we planned for this summer was centralized in its development because of the, the haste that we had to use to get it planned. With more time to plan for next summer, we will provide a budget to each school and have principals work together in teams to develop plans that they think would most benefit their schools. They then will present their plans during a K-12 principal meeting so they can learn from each other and improve their 2022 summer programming. In closing, we built this graphic as a one-page reference for School Board members and staff to use as a way to summarize and explain our use of one-time funds to provide resources for our teachers and schools to support students and families in alignment with our strategic plan, "Learning for All." At this time, I will turn things back over to Ms. Schmidt to share the larger framework of our budget moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Haas. As I mentioned in my introduction, the recovery plan that he just went over included multiple funding sources. But I'd like to specifically highlight the ARP funding, which is the largest portion. As a stipulation of that grant, we must receive public input on our plan. And while it was developed based on previous stakeholder engagement opportunities, we will be seeking additional feedback prior to finalizing the grant application. And this plan will also be posted to our website as required. So I stated in the intro on the slide, the fund was established to help safely reopen and sustain safe operations of schools and address the impacts of COVID-19 on our students by addressing students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. So here is our draft plan utilizing the category, categories provided in the template of the grant. So first, to continue our mitigation efforts, we will use the funding to make ventilation improvements, provide PPE, and purchase additional desks, and provide storage for excess furniture to allow for social distancing. To address unfinished learning, we will make investments to expand summer offerings this summer and next summer. We will also improve opportunities to active school activities by providing vans at schools to remove transportation. by providing vans at schools to remove transportation as a barrier to participation. And lastly, to address students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs, we will utilize these funds to continue to offer a fully virtual school option for those students who elect that, increasing counseling staff at all schools, and increasing staff to reduce class sizes. And what's cut off on that slide is it's the note that some of these items will be partially funded by other sources. And then other items mentioned in the previous slide not included here will be funded by other sources. So with that, we'll open up for feedback and questions.
Any questions for Dr. Haas or Ms. Schmidt?
I had a question. Has there been any update on how many people are interested in the virtual school? I know there was some worry about the numbers dwindling as COVID became more of a thing in the rearview mirror.
I see Ms. Collins has joined us.
The number I had this afternoon was 340 students.
What is that in relation to what it was a month or two ago? Similar, going down?
It's gone up.
Going up.
At one point, it was a little bit over 100, but we still had a lot of students we had and parents we hadn't spoken to. So as the schools have done their due diligence around contacting every parent, the numbers have steadily increased. We are, I don't know, Dr. McGlaughlin's on. I'm not sure where we are with our percentages, but the last I looked at those, we were well above 90% at every school as far as getting intense from parents.
That number is correct. I haven't looked in a couple of days either, Ms. Collins, but we were really inching towards 100%.
Ms. Collins, how are the 340 students spread across the grade levels?
Now you're suggesting I can remember all that. But my best memory around that is it is distributed with our fewest at our lowest grade levels. So we had about, if I remember right, about 10 kindergarteners was our lowest group, but the rest were hovering grade level-wise, 25 to 30. A little different, first grade's a little lower than the three, four, and five. But we can get that information to you.
Thank you.
I guess as a comment, the reason I ask is just because that's a, as I understand, that's going to be a one-time expense, right? We're not going to continue the virtual school in a year and it's just a lot of money to put aside. But it sounds like we still have robust participation and interest in doing the virtual schooling for this year. So perhaps it's a worthwhile expenditure. And on that note, I remember we had this conversation earlier, and I think it's worth noting, I guess, for the people that might be watching. The ventilation system was another one that I didn't know if it'd be necessary in the future, but you guys reassured me and I agreed with your assessment that it's just a good thing to have in general. It's a good time to upgrade ventilation. It reduces illnesses across the board. And we all know, especially those of us with kids, that winter time is kind of a rough time anyway. So I do think that's a good expense.
Can you tell us a little bit about the vans at our school? And do we have drivers, enough people to be drivers for those?
So the vans would be just a regular seven or eight passenger minivan. And it would be dedicated to the school, but it would be available for school staff to drive, whether that's an after-school tutor. I think we're being a little more flexible and creative of who was able to drive students. It wouldn't have dedicated van drivers. It would be utilizing existing school staff.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have one more. I can't pull up the PowerPoints. I can't go back. And I apologize if I missed this, but so we're allotting some money to each individual school to go over, to come up with things targeted to their school. I thought I saw that in passing. Is that true?
So what, so right now, the plan is we're going to, we're going to see how things shake out with remaining funds after the expenditures, because a lot of what we presented tonight was, is still approximations. And based on what's remaining, then what we would do is allocate funds to the schools based on the differentiated formula, but they would plan together so that they could really optimize their plans and work together as a team. We felt that, or at least part of my assessment this summer, was that we did a lot of planning centrally and we didn't really give individual schools a whole lot of input about what we were going to be offering in terms of programming or necessarily how we were going to offer it because we just needed to move quickly. I would really like to engage the principals and school staff more in the process going through the year this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Schmidt and Dr. Haas. Item 86, update on our revenue and expenditure. Well, amendments on those. So Ms. Kumazawa.
Good evening, School Board members. I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning. I'm here this evening to propose revenue and expenditure amendments to the current fiscal year 22's budget. This evening's presentation is for information only, and we would present the appropriation, which is also attached to this item in ESB for approval on the consent agenda in August. As part of local government's framework for evaluating local revenues more frequently due to the uncertain impacts of COVID on our local economy, I'm pleased to share that they have revised their FY22 projections upward as part of recurring base revenues. The upward revisions are based partly on stronger consumer-driven activity and actual data for business-related taxes. Based on our shared formula, the school division's revenue increase is $1.46 million. This slide presents a summary of the proposed corresponding expenditure increase and proposed corresponding expenditure increases. They include a transfer to the Bright Stars Fund, which I will provide more details about, an increase in the transfer to K-Tech due to increased compensation assumptions, an increase in the transfer to the Technology Replacement Fund for voice-over IP phone replacements, two custodial FTEs to provide service to the new mobile units, increased overtime costs due to a change in state compensation regulations, one Special Education Administration FTE, one Assessment and Policy FTE and funding for a one-time payroll consultant and other contingencies. In special revenue funds, the Technology Replacement Fund will incur the cost for the voice-over IP phone replacements. And in addition, a new Bright Stars Virginia Preschool Initiative Fund is proposed. This will include state revenues of about $600,000 and the before-mentioned transfer from the school fund of $700,000. Corresponding expenditures of $1.3 million are planned to maintain original levels of service. So I want to share a little bit more detail with regards to the newly proposed special revenue fund. That's the Bright Stars Fund. In the upcoming school year, ACPS will assume the leadership role for this preschool program that was previously financially managed by the Department of Social Services within local government. The benefits of assuming this role include being fully responsible for decisions about programming and beginning to integrate this program within our other preschool programs like Title I or Early Childhood Special Education. Here's a list of the current Bright Stars programs. We currently have nine Bright Stars classrooms at six schools. This slide shows the projected revenues for the Bright Stars Fund. We're anticipating revenues from the state through the Virginia Preschool Initiative Grant of $610,459. We are required to provide a local match of this amount. In addition, we're transferring about $90,000 for a total local contribution of $700,000. As mentioned previously, the source of this local contribution is from the revised local government transfer. The revenues will support the costs of 18.5 teachers and TAs, half of a coordinator, and half of a bookkeeper. In addition, the budget includes about $57,000 for services provided by community organizations and $75,000 for other operational costs. At this point, I'll turn it over to you all for any questions and comments. If there are no questions or comments, I'll put this back on the agenda on the August consent agenda for action.
Thanks, Maya.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Maya, very much. And thank you for all of the work that you've done all year in developing our budget and presenting everything related to the budget. So thank you so very, very much. We are now ready for other business by board members and the superintendent. And AJ, I think, would like to make a comment at this time. AJ?
Hi. So I didn't know at appropriate time to make a comment. But going back to the discussions I heard about the concerns with the transgender policy, I just kind of wanted to, I don't know, I heard a lot of the same opinion about worrying when it came to locker rooms and bathrooms. And I only kind of heard it being one-sided about people worrying about their cis children being around transgender children. And I wanted to kind of make awareness that it kind of is on both sides of the coin. That is kind of concerning to transgender individuals as well with possible harassment. I knew an acquaintance that identified as a transgender man, and he decided to hang out with a cisgendered man and was sexually harassed during like a sleepover that they had had. And I just heard a lot of people kind of talking about how they were concerned about their cis children getting harassed in locker rooms or bathrooms, but not really realizing that it is kind of, it can kind of go both ways about being a concern. I just kind of wanted to make it aware that it's not just only cisgender children being concerned about it. It is also transgender children.
Thank you so much, AJ, for that comment. And whenever you feel that you have something to say, make sure that you let us know and that you express your comments. So thanks again for what you've just relayed to us. Thank you so much for that.
But AJ, my experience is that if you break into song, you get in trouble.
I just want to echo, thank you so much for bringing that up, AJ. One thing that's hard about, I think it's worth saying for any other students that are watching is that, you know, public comment, people can express whatever feelings they are. But I hope that students, when they listen in, this was something that was personal to me the week prior where we were hearing some comments that were a little bit rough. Like I remember one in particular that said that black people commit more crimes, which, you know, that's tough to listen to. And so I just hope that all of our students know that they are supported and welcome. And when people speak, why, I appreciate being able to hear what they have to say. It is certainly not representative of our schools in all instances. I think that's worth noting, especially as we've had so much public comment.
Right.
I just, I wanted to echo that too. And I know that it's a little bit, it feels like a little bit unusual because I know we're going to, we're not going to further discuss and vote on the policy until the next meeting. But I feel like four weeks of wondering might be a very long time in the life of a student or of a family. So I just, I really want our, you know, anyone who's listening tonight, our trans and gender expansive students and community members to know that, you know, we see you. And that, in my mind, you know, your humanity is not up for debate here. And that, you know, as Katrina said, there has been an enormous amount of support that we've gotten from community members in our emails. So I just want to make sure that people know that.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, and thank you again, AJ, for bringing this discussion up for us at this point in our meeting. Are there any other comments or any other business by any other board members? If not, we thank all of our staff. We thank the people who made public comment for us. And we thank again AJ for being our student rep on the board. And we will stand adjourned, I think, until August the 12th. Is that the right? Am I in the right ballpark with our next?
That's the right day.
Okay, thank you. All right, so have a good month.
Bye, everybody. Be well.
It's the 12th. Good night. Wyoming, it's still daylight over here. About to go outside.
Right, and maybe you'll see some other moose like you did the other day, right?
I know. I'm going to.